Well, I'm actually on the Zoom, Jerry. I'm actually.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our City of Palacca March 11th, 2021 meeting. Please govern yourselves accordingly. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to have our pledge by Commissioner Borum, followed by invocation. Is Pastor Mulberry on? Pastor Mulberry is right there, perfect timing. And we'll have our invocation by Pastor Alonso Mulberry. Will everyone please stand at this time?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, let me thank you for this day. Thank you for your love and your kindness. For the multitude in the universe. We thank you because you blessed us to come together again.
Go ahead and cut that mic off for me. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Moving forward, we're also, we're here on item two of the agenda, approval of the minutes from the February 26th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
It's motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognitions, and we have quite a few tonight. First up is proclamation for Women's History Month. Ms. Krantz, you want to read that one for me?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas March is Women's History Month, when we celebrate American women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. They have played and continue to play a critical economical, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of this nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, and have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas the 2021 theme for Women's History Month is the valiant women of the vote refusing to be silenced continues to celebrate the suffrage centennial, honoring women who led the efforts for women's rights to vote, and whereas for generations, women have resolved conflicts in their homes, schools, and communities, and rejected violence as counterproductive, stressing the need to restore respect, establish justice, and reduce the causes of conflict as the surest way to peace. From women's rights and racial justice to disarmament, the drive for nonviolent change has been championed by the visionary women, and whereas this month, the Palaca City Commission celebrates the women who have consciously built supportive, nonviolent alternatives and loving communities, as well as those advocating change by giving voice to the unrepresentative Senate and hope to victims of violence and those who dream of a peaceful world. Now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, the mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission hereby endorse and proclaim March 2021 as Women's History Month in the City of Palaca. And we call upon its citizens to join us in observing this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities which celebrate women and recognizes the ongoing persistence of our mothers, grandmothers, aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. We ask our citizens to join in celebrating all women this month and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I've set here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Krantz. It's a motion by Commissioner McCaskill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for Women's History Month. Ms. Correa, if you could, we want to present you with this year's Women's History Month proclamation. And again, we want to thank all the women in Putnam County who've made their place in history. We're going to just hand it, we're handing it to, I'm just going to hand it to you. For sake, for sake of social distancing today, but again, just thank you very much. Robbie Correa. Thank you very much. So again, just one of the many women in this audience who've made great differences in the community, who worked tirelessly, and again, we thank all you ladies for the work that you do in this community. So again, thank you very much. Next up, right on time, colorectal cancer awareness month, Putnam County Health Department, Mary Garcia. Perfect three seconds.
Oh, Lord, I'm too bored for this, gentlemen. I don't know. You want to read the proclamation?
We're going to read the proclamation first.
If you would.
Okay, Ms. Krantz?
Whereas the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Cancer Research Foundation of America, and the American Digestive Health Foundation, and the White House have joined together to encourage Americans to observe March 2021 as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, to encourage adults 50 and older to get screened, and whereas colorectal cancer is the third leading cause of cancer-related deaths in men and women, and the second most common cause of cancer death where men and women are combined. Each year, nearly 137,000 people are diagnosed with colorectal cancer, often referred to as colon cancer. Every three minutes, someone is diagnosed with colon cancer, and every 10 minutes of life is lost to this disease. The risk of colon cancer increases with age. Nine out of 10 cases occur in people over 50 years old, and the likelihood is also greater for people of African-American, Eastern European descent, and those with bowel disease or a family in history of colorectal cancer. And whereas one-third of Floridians above the age of 50 do not receive annual screenings for colorectal cancer. Symptoms can include stomach pain, aches, or cramps that do not go away, and weight loss without a known cause. Yet many cases have no symptoms, especially early on when it can be prevented or more effectively treated. So it is crucial for people to get regular screenings, which are now covered by most health insurance plans for adults ages 50 to 75 and no cost to the patient. Whereas the Florida Department of Health and Senior Services, Bureau of Cancer Control, in partnership with the Florida Cancer Consortium, the American Cancer Society, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention remain committed and dedicated to inform the public about colorectal cancer prevention and screening. Now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, the mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission hereby endorse, declare, and designate the month of March 2021 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Palaca, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palaca to observe the month by contacting the Putnam County Health Department to inquire about colon cancer screening programs available locally, as well as any other information regarding the prevention and control of colorectal cancer. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move, second.
This is motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell. The second by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause. Garcia.
Hi, guys. I haven't seen you all in so long, except on Zoom, so I Zoom down here. Don't, don't tell my friends and...
Chief's in the corner.
He loves me, so that's a good thing. But yeah, it's been a crazy year, but I want to thank you again. This is something that you all have been dedicated since I've been a health officer to make sure that people are aware of the problems of colorectal cancer, and that screening is the one defense that we have right up front to be able to prevent this, the deaths that come from the disease. I also want to encourage if individuals do not feel like they have the ability to be able to get diagnosed to work with the Health Department, we also work with the Putnam First Cancer Fund to be able to diagnose both men and women for issues with cancer, and, and we have services that are usually not available in, in counties like the size of Putnam, but we by forming some of the coalitions that we have and some of the the 501(c)(3)'s that we've created with the Putnam First Cancer Fund, we are blessed to be able to offer some of these services to individuals that might think that they can't have them. So we're grateful to each of you. We're grateful that each year that you actually endorse this colorectal awareness cancer month. So I thank each of you for your support.
Thank you. And again, and thank you, thank you, and thank you to the Health Department for all the work that you do.
You're so welcome. And then I just kind of put a plug in since I'm here.
Sure.
I just want to encourage everybody to please sign up for vaccinations. As of last night at midnight, we had administered over 14,733 doses of vaccines for Putnam County residents. We, that's doses, so of people that have been vaccinated, that's 9,412. And as the, as the governor releases some of the data and some of the information and lowers the age groups, we just encourage everybody to get registered on the floridavaccine.gov, so that vaccination site is available. I'll be happy, I think I shared it with you all with Sunny, and that was shared on your Facebook pages, on your website, so I appreciate your help in doing that. We just need to have individuals sign up and get registered for it, so that I appreciate that. And then one thing is we're changing our testing site. You know that the Putnam County Fair is going to be occurring in a few weeks, and we have been grateful for them to have let us use their facilities for all this time to do our vaccinations, but they need to have their fairgrounds to do the fairing. So we will be moving to our test site at Hussin Avenue, so we'll be doing testing on Mondays for the next three weeks, and then we'll see how that works, and then we'll do vaccinations the rest of the week, or at least the weeks through April, April Fool's Day at least. So, so we'll be there, and if anybody needs, as I said, please register. If you've got individuals that are not able to to have a computer, there is a phone number that they can call to get registered as well. There is a helpline. And then most people know my number. I think you call me anyway, so I've registered a lot of you or a lot of citizens along the way, so we appreciate that. So, but thank you, and I thank you for your support and encourage individuals to take a look at. We are working with the Mount Table or Baptist Church, and we are working with our Putnam County, with our St. John's River State College to do a mission, a church mission there on the 25th, so we will keep you posted on that as well on any changes that occur.
Okay. And we also want to remind everyone to continually socially distance, practice positive hand health. Hand washing as well as, as well as masking when, when appropriate, and we want to thank everyone in this audience for wearing your mask. We've got 100% participation from everyone who's not behind a plexiglass shield, so again, we just thank you guys for all that you do. Be, just continue to be cautious. We've got 109 deaths in Putnam County. We're reporting a 93-year-old today, and I, I think that we're going to just continue to move forward with the new normal. So again, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Next proclamation, Ms. Krantz's brain awareness.
Thank you, sir. Whereas the Pilot Club of Palaca is one of more than 300 clubs chartered throughout Pilot International, a global organization of effective business and professional leaders working together to improve the quality of life in local communities throughout the world. And whereas Pilot International's focus on service to people affected by brain-related disorders was adopted in 1990, since then approximately 25,000 adult and youth members have been working together to increase awareness and raise funds for programs associated with this focus, and whereas Pilot International provides guidance and encouragement to our communities through sponsorship of activities which increase public awareness of the advances and benefits of brain research. And whereas Pilot International awards grants and scholarships supporting students pursuing vocations in brain health and safety, and whereas Pilot Clubs are joining others for Brain Awareness Week in order to provide information about diseases affecting more than 150 million adults and children. This international effort includes hospitals, schools, government agencies, and community groups working together to expand interest in brain, brain research, and brain-related disorders. Now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of March 15th through 21st, 2021, as Brain Awareness Week in the City of Palaca, calling this observance to the attention of our citizens and observing all citizens to express their support and recognition of this effort by the Pilot Club of Palaca and the Pilot Club International. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Second. Motion on the floor, the second, Mr. McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And...
Let's give a round, I got you. Let's give a round of applause. We have on Zoom today, we've got members of Pilot International, the Palaca Pilot Club. Do we have a representative at this time? Do we have any members of the Pilot Club here in the audience? So I'd see Ms. Hafner, and I'd see, I'd see Ms. Hafner, Ms. White, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Fitz Stevens, so, and also Ms. Lockhart. Who's going to speak for me tonight?
Mayor Hill.
I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, I missed you over there. That's because you're a wildcat.
Aw, no.
So, I'm sorry, and so looks like Ms. Lockhart's going to speak. I think she had her hand up. You're muted. You're muted, Ms. Lockhart. Minister Lockhart, you're muted.
Yeah, Ms. Miller's going to speak. I was just letting you know I was here.
I see.
Mayor Hill and the Commissioners of Palaca, City Commissioners, the members of the Palaca Pilot Club would like to thank you for recognizing us yearly on our brain awareness. Brain awareness is one of the main focuses of Pilot International, and we thank you very much for recognizing the brain awareness and recognizing us as being the, the host of brain awareness in this area, and we thank you.
So again, and we also thank Pilot International for your work as it relates to brain awareness, but also your work in total within this community. And so again, thank you to you ladies for all that you do in Palaca, and we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Perfect example of women's history. Thank you again. Moving on, we'll give Ms. Krantz a little bit of a break, and we'll go to Clarence Dixon Day and have a history lesson. Ms. Thomas.
Whereas Clarence Dixon is a native of the City of Palaca and attended the historic Central Academy. And whereas in 1960, Mr. Dixon became the first African-American to complete the Miami Police Academy during segregation in Miami. And whereas in 1966, Mr. Dixon was awarded the Miami Police Officer of the Year Award for seducing a man who held a firearm on him at point-blank range without utilizing deadly force. And whereas Mr. Dixon rose through the rank at the Miami Police Department, serving as major, deputy chief, assistant police chief, and subsequently, police chief. And whereas Chief Dixon was the first African-American to serve as a city of Miami police chief from 1985 until his retirement in 1988. And whereas in 2017, Chief Dixon was among the first recipient of the first five Pioneer Award given by the Miami Community Police Benevolent Association in conjunction with the Black Police Precinct and Courthouse Museum. And whereas the City of Miami has announced it will recognize Chief Dixon's lifetime achievement by naming its police academy the Chief Dixon College in his honor. And whereas in a recent article in the Palaca Daily News, Chief Dixon credited his native city when he stated the following, "I really attribute my career to where I was born and where I came from. All I can say is, thank God I was born in Palaca, because I don't know if I would have done all I've done those Miami people like my Palaca attitude." And whereas the city desires to recognize its native son for his lifetime of achievement and his return to Palaca, the gem of the St. John's River. And now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby endorse and proclaim March, and we don't have the date yet where they're going to name the college after him, and that's a date that we'd like to put into the proclamation, and that'll be about Chief Clarence Dixon Day in the City of Palaca, and urge all citizens to join together in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. And witness, therefore, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
So move.
This is motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think the quote says it all about Chief Dixon and what Palaca means to him. Couldn't say it any better. And so we're going to join in. The motion carries. Chief Shaw as well is going to send, we're going to send a communication over, and we're going to send a communication over to Chief Dixon. He's a family member of Ann Keys and the Keys family here in town, and... And just a wonderful example of what happens when Palaca folks begin to go into other areas of the community and contribute. And so Ms. Thomas has worked, is very familiar with Chief Dixon, having been a general counsel for Miami Dade Corrections. She's familiar and she speaks wonders of, of the chief and what he means to the community in Miami. And so we've got Chief Shaw and also Commissioner Jones, who's a former law enforcement detective as well in the room. And you know, it's just always wonderful. We'd love to get a comment from you guys as to what this means to this community to have someone reach that pinnacle. Commissioner Jones, you can go first.
What that means is to me, someone from a small town like Palaca, like myself, to be able to transition and move to the big city and retain the small-town values would be an asset to a community like Miami Dade County, Florida. And it's a testament to him and his perseverance and I applaud him and I thank him for being a trailblazer.
Well said. Chief Shaw.
I too echo Commissioner Jones' comments and reference to Chief Dixon. It's an honor to be able to follow behind such a proud and properly represented man. Those type of individuals provide opportunities for all of us and allow us to continue to move forward and examples that we can live up to and be proud of.
Definitely appreciate you, chief. Next up, let's give a round of applause to Chief Dixon. Keeping in that same trend of history. We also, on a sad note, we are honoring and we've had the flag flying at half-mast for the life and the legacy of former chief and commissioner Willie Washington. Ms. Krantz, will you read the proclamation for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Honorable Willie Washington Jr., 82, a longtime resident of the town of Weelaka, peacefully entered into the sunset of life on Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. And whereas Mr. Washington was a native of Crescent City, was born on January 27th, 1939, was educated in Putnam County School District at the historic Central Academy High School in Palaca. And whereas Mr. Washington was a devoted husband of 42 years and a committed father to five children. And whereas Mr. Washington's personal life was varied and impressive, beginning as a maintenance man with the Putnam County Public School District and culminating into being the first African-American elected to serve on the Town Council of Weelaka. And whereas Mr. Washington carved a path of excellence for a life well-lived with many professional and trailblazing accomplishments that shine as a beacon to all citizens of Putnam County. And whereas Mr. Washington's accomplishments and stature not just measured by his professional accomplishments, but also reflected in, in personal and spiritual life. Now therefore, I Terrell L. Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, recognize Mr. Washington for a life well-lived and extend our condolences to the family, friends, and especially the town of Weelaka on the passing of this John. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
So move. It's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. Let's have a moment of silence for Chief and Commissioner Willie Washington, the Honorable. Thank you. And so I want to first thank this commission as well as our staff, our city manager, the Palaca Police Department, Chief Shaw participated in ceremonies as well, the Flag's Reniery Staff, the Sheriff's Office, the town of Weelaka. We had our celebration for just a historic individual. And those who knew Chief knew that he was just, just an icon who walked around and, and he, 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 he just was someone who presented himself as a loving citizen, very, very mild-mannered when you see him. But when he spoke, he spoke with wisdom. And he could, he dedicated himself to this community for over, over four decades. And first, that first constable in Putnam County who covered the entire South End. And first African-American constable. He was the first of many and he served on that Weelaka Commission for many years. I always laugh because whenever he came to Florida League of Cities, to our Northeast Florida League of Cities meeting, him and his wife would sit there and she passed three years prior. They'd always win the prizes and they sat in the back of the room and they'd just laugh and smile. But wherever we went, they were there representing Weelaka. And they were always just an awesome couple. And we just, we were just blessed to have had him here in Putnam County to have been a shining example of what it is to live a life of service. And so we just want to send our well wishes out and our blessings and our prayers to, to the Washington family during this, during this time of bereavement. Any comments from the commission? So again, just, we just will continue to pray for the Washington family and we've lost an icon here in this community. And between these two gentlemen, we see just what a life of service and law enforcement provides from folks who have their roots right here in Palaca at Central Academy. And so again, I want to thank both of those gentlemen for the way in which they've served this community. Next up, we've got a proclamation for Willie Wright. If the commission had an opportunity, we're gonna do something a bit odd on this proclamation because we actually want it to be somewhat of a surprise to Mr. Wright tomorrow at 2:00. But if the commission can read, can look over their proclamation inside of the packet, it was an add-on for today. We want to recognize him for his service to this community as well. And it will come tomorrow. And so I don't think Mr. Wright is in Zoom land and we're gonna ask everyone to kind of hold this secret close to their vest, even though it's a public meeting. But this is someone who served this community for, he served the hospital for over 50 years in his capacity and he's been over 62 years as a ref in this, in the community as well. And so we're gonna recognize him tomorrow upon approval of the proclamation. And at this time, we'd ask for a motion. Second. It's a motion on the floor, second, my Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. And again, we're gonna recognize Mr. Willie Wright tomorrow at his retirement ceremony. Moving on to public comment, public comments will be limited to three minutes. No act will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, please fill out one of the yellow cards located to my left in the back of the room so that we can have your information for the record. If you are in Zoom land, you can use the YouTube chat function or you can dial in at 329-0100, extension zero, and you, your call will be taken in the order received. First up for public comments, Mr. Wayne McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a letter I'd like to read and then provide copies accordingly. March 8, 2021, Honorable Mayor Terrell Hill, City of Palaca. This subject concerns City of Palaca Police Department. Dear Mayor, recently the Beck Automotive Group had a valuable automotive part stolen from Beck Ford on Palm Avenue early one morning. Video surveillance captured an image of a vehicle involved. Officer Thomas Johnson completed the incident report and later that day noticed a vehicle matching the description involved in the theft. Officer Johnson detained the vehicle and the occupant and made an arrest charging the perpetrator with grand theft. From the moment the incident occurred to the arrest of the person involved, the City of Palaca Police Department personnel were totally involved, professional in their action. I specifically want to commend Officer Thomas Johnson for his thoroughness and professionalism. To say that Officer Johnson was diligent and persistent in his actions would be an understatement. Sincerely, Wayne McLean, Vice President, Beck Automotive Group. Copy, Don Holmes, City of, City Manager, City of Palaca, Chief Jason Saul, Police Chief of Palaca. Thank you, Mayor.
We've got Chief Shaw here to receive the copies of the letter. And again, we just want to thank you for your kind words and for providing that testimony to us. And let's give a round of applause to. Thank you very much. It's always good when we get a positive comment coming in and we can understand just how hard these young men work. These young men and women who work for the Palaca Police Department who put their lives at stake every day they go to work. And so again, just thank you for providing us with that information.
But, and, and it also reflects the leadership the chief has provided for the department as well as the City of Palaca. So that's a reflection on the chief as well, so, so this one.
Next up, Mr. Sam Carr, Mr. Ken Mahaffey from the Bartram Society of Florida, Bartram Trail Society of Florida.
Correct. We're here to, to tell you, we're, we're gonna try to pull off the St. John's River Bartram Frolic April the 17th and 18th on the riverfront. Most of our activities are, this will be our fourth frolic that we've done. And the activities, majority of them are gonna be outside. And so we're, we're looking forward to it. We will try to have our VIP sponsors reception at Friday night at the River Center. And we're trying to figure out how to do that, but we'll, we'll work on that. Saturday activities include 10 recreational events. So in the past, you know, we've, we've always had the kids and, and this been a major part of it. Well, we did the kids program in November. We did it virtually and that was quite an experience and it really was. But we are gonna honor our promise to the kids and have our 10 passport to the, to the past stations, which will include our living history folks with William Bartram will be there, the long warrior, King of the Seminoles, he'll be there. European trader Joe Gwiggins will be there. And the Fort Mosaic militia has decided to join us again this year and all. And so, and we'll also have some 18th century, century residents of Florida there as well. So that'll be the, that'll be what the frolic looks like on the front, riverfront in Palaca. And again, I mentioned to you, we have six different recreational events. Biking, hiking, paddling, and even an equestrian event this year, which is gonna be new. So that's what we hope to do. We hope to do, to have food, well, food trucks will be on St. John's Avenue from 10 to 4. And we'll have, we're gonna try to use the amphitheater for our tales of the St. John's River and also some singing down there. Music, bluegrass music type, type, type things. If we can pull off the Pride of Palaca guided riverboat tours, we would like to have three riverboat tours on, on that day as well. So we'll work with Jonathan, whoever, to, to see how we can get that done. And our sponsors are the Putnam County Tourist Development Council. The Florida Humanities Council is, is helping with sponsors. The CARES grant that we applied for and received is gonna help us tremendously. And we probably will be applying to the CRA for some funding as well. So, so that's where our, those are our sponsors. So this year, money's not a problem, which is really great. I was mentioning that we were.
You gotta say that one more time.
That's right. It really is nice and all. So, you know, again, we, we started this here in this room. It's where all this stuff started. And to see how it's gone on and it's been four years and we've progressed every single year. But it really has, it's, it's developed into something large to the point that the Bartram Trail Society, the Bartram Trail Society of Florida, actually was started by Ken Mahaffey in 1978. So we revived it in 2019. And so that took the place of the committee that actually did the frolic. And, and that takes us outside of Putnam County, not just in Putnam County. So the Bartram Trail in Putnam County was the first. And then Volusia County has developed their Bartram Trail. And now Duval County is developing their Bartram Trail. And St. John's County is doing it as well. And so is Nassau County. And then we just got word that Latrell County through the Florida Park Service over there, it's gonna be doing a Bartram Trail over there. So we're, we're busy.
You're Bartram Trail in North Central Florida now.
Yeah, well, he cuts it off at Delaine. So, so yeah, that's right. Amazing, amazing. So what we started here is growing and, and we're looking forward to, to, to doing the, the event. So I mentioned all the recreational events. Part of that will also be 100 tandem bicyclers from the, from the villages. They're coming here for three whole days. And they're gonna participate with us as they can. On Sunday, we're moving off the riverfront on Sunday. And what, the base of operations will be the Pignato Theater up, up, up on the hill. And that's where we're gonna have our Bartram Symposium and filming of the Cultivating the Wild film, or the viewing of Cultivating the Wild film, which actually started here in Palaca. So it'll be kind of a homecoming. And, and, and that'll be from 2 to 5 o'clock on, on Sunday. And we'll also have four other recreational events going on that day as well, all centered basically up at the Ravine Gardens. So that's what we're gonna do and we really appreciate it. Eddie and Weston have been really good about helping us get this thing organized and all. So our application is in and we're having our meeting with you folks on the 13th to get it all.
And you'll be bringing in another request as well, correct?
Pardon me?
You'll be bringing in another request as well, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And so we're also looking for, there's, there's, we also see the Bartram Committee come back before us in the near future with a request for a resolution for partnership with the city. And the city has been a continued partner for this, this event. And so again, we think, we, we totally thank the, the Bartram Committee for your vision, for so far, for your commitment and your work in this community. It, it's second to none and we, we just love you guys and the work that you're doing here.
Thank you, Mayor. And the feeling is, is mutual again. It wouldn't have happened if it hadn't started here in this room. So we really appreciate it.
Thank you. And so Mr. Cutright with, with Community Affairs is gonna probably be your, is gonna be your main contact with his department this year. They've got some wonderful ideas that him and the city manager and, and council have worked diligently on to make sure that social distancing is a, you know, it's a part of what you've got and, and they can definitely get with you and help you with your plan.
We, we have submitted our, our plan and we copied what was on the county's website and, and the national website as far as outdoor activities and so forth. And so that's all part of our plan. But a couple of unique things that we do plan is we're gonna have sanitizing man dressed as in a hazmat suit. And he's gonna entertain the kids by adhering to, making sure that they are adhering to the, to the thing, do it as an educational tool. So, so that's, that's what we're gonna do. We're also gonna survey.
Yeah, Mr. Cummins choked up in the back.
So we're, 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 we're gonna be surveying, as we always do, the guests and asking them five coded questions during that survey.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. Do we have anyone in the YouTube chat or, and there's no one on the line? Seeing no, hearing no one in the YouTube chat?
Not just handing it, but throwing it off to family and friends because that's a recipe for disaster. Because in a position like that. Because in a position like that, you don't need that kind of environment because when things go wrong, there's gonna be some self-interest or things go right, you're not gonna report what's really going on because it's your family or your friend. So you really need outside people that has no ties to friends, relatives, or whatever. And not having the position appetized, that's a recipe for disaster. So I would like to know why wasn't it appetized? I'd like to know when are you gonna pull restrictions off of the North Side?
What wasn't what advertised?
Say that again?
What wasn't what advertised?
The job for that you was gonna feel in the paper the other day. It was in the paper.
I haven't seen the paper yesterday.
He's talking about the finance director position. It was advertised. As a matter of fact, we utilized the services of a recruiting firm to process the application.
Your mic's off, I think.
Sorry about that. My voice is usually-
Loud enough, but if he's talking about the position of finance director, it was advertised and we utilized the services of a recruiting firm as we had in uh previous job searches to process applications that were submitted and received. So it was advertised.
In what paper did you advertise?
Don't know that I don't know that it was in a paper. It was advertised at various uh trade publications and and on Indeed and in a number of different uh uh venues. I think most of the advertisement was done by the firm that we paid to conduct the search.
Wouldn't that restrict uh uh our people of the community of knowing since you had such a limited appetizing procedure?
Must not have. We got some applications from people in the community.
Why wouldn't you put it in the paper?
Sir, I didn't say that it wasn't in the paper. I said, I don't know that it was in the paper, but it was in a number of different advertising uh venues.
Is that um open to everybody in the 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 places that you said it's in?
It was open to everyone for to apply who had the credentials necessary.
Answer my question, sir. I ask you if it if it was open to everybody in the community. You're skipping and jumping and windmilling. You're not speaking to the facts.
Sir, I'm gonna try to be polite and courteous in response to your question. The position was open to anyone who was credentialed and had the qualifications. It was not restricted from anyone.
All right, we're gonna move on. What was your your second question was about the North Side and the police department?
When are you gonna pull the restrictions because there is no representation over there?
We have restrictions on patrol team?
What somebody told me, I'm not telling you what I heard. Over there, those kids run up and down the street with four-wheelers. Crime is up because the fact that if this common sense would tell you, if I know the police is not over here, I'm gonna do whatever I wanna do. If there was presence of the police, then you'd be skeptical about doing something. But knowing that they're not there, that's why you have the crime rate that you have. And it seems like, you know, it's either they're not gonna send them or you just don't give a damn about the 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 area or what. It it's something that's not going on. The arithmetic just doesn't add up.
All right, what we're gonna do, Chief Shaw's here. He's gonna answer your question. Uh, I think we're at the three minute. We're probably at the five minute mark.
Well, I over, but that's-
You're fine. She's gonna she's gonna respond. And then if the commission wants to respond after that, I'll let them go. But again, thank you, Mr. Spels, for your comments. We're we're gonna have chief address it.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't know any of the restrictions we may have on the North Side as referring to. Uh, as of the last several months, we've made a number of different cases on the North Side. And we've also uh increased our presence by uh look working with PHA to reopen the substation on Washington Street. We're in the process of doing that now. Uh, we've been having people man that area continuously. Um, but there the issues he referred to as far as restrictions, I'm not aware of any restrictions the police department has for the North Side.
Okay. And if Mr. And if Mr. Spels has, hold on a second, Mr. Spels. And if he has any other concerns, I'll have a hit with you.
Concerns, he can, he's welcome uh come meet me at the police department or talk to me after the meeting. I'll be glad to talk with.
I mean, I don't particularly like from one conversation. I like to speak to someone that's open to everyone. When you go, I say, I know.
You can't get a better conversation than with the chief, but so but we're not gonna have this conversation for the rest of this meeting. So what what I'm gonna do is let the commission, I appreciate your comments. So if you wanna address those to the chief, uh, he's open and willing. Um, there will be some opportunities for open forums probably in a later date um to address any additional comments. But for right now, we're over your public comment and I'm gonna let the commission respond. Any any additional?
I'll make a comment. Um, over the past pretty much three years, there's been a number of uh different things that's been happening, not only just on the North Side, but yet throughout the community. So um but particularly, I have gotten a number of calls from the North Side and I had um started working with the chief, also working the city manager, as well as with um the Palaca Housing Authority CEO. Um, as it related to the number of issues that was coming up. And I know maybe some of the other commissioners and maybe the mayor has also been uh notified of some of the things. But what was put together um is still in the works right now. And again, they've committed uh a unit over there on the North Side to start addressing some of those issues. Uh, I do know the our police department has been hampered with um staffing levels. Uh, the the chief himself is out in the community uh patrolling. Um, he has his other administrators uh patrolling as well. So uh again, the there's two entities that's taken up quite a bit of our time just from uh small, I mean, minor crime, mi- not minor crime, but just Walmart and uh the a a few North Side things is happening. So those two entities are taking up at least fifty percent of our police uh calls or what have you. So they're in the process of working on some things. And again, I I I kinda applaud the chief, the city manager, and also the CEO uh um for the Palaca Housing Authority for the work that they've done. And they're doing the very best that they can at this time and constantly moving forward to the solutions. But we need help from the community as well. Because the the community has a uh a responsibility too in terms of, a lot of people don't wanna be on the record in terms of calling for the fear of repercussions. Uh, and and they have voiced their opinion to me uh as it related to that. So we have a twofold thing. We try to uh put together a committee over there to try to be uh I guess block, have block captains for people who are um very well respected in the community, but uh we gotta have a partnership. We gotta have work from within the community as well as our uh our staff is do- doing everything that they can. So we gotta be, it's gotta be an overall partnership.
Any other com- any other comments from the commission?
I have a comment. I applaud Mr. Spell for coming uh to address the uh commission. I don't know about a uh a restriction put on either. Uh, however, we do need citizens to come in and and tell us where the problems are. Um, and and Commissioner Borum, I appreciate you giving us that feedback because I had no idea that there's a program going on. And we as a commission, I I uh I would like to see more dialogue on what's going on in our community because I guarantee you, just from that that uh transit action between two of you guys or the three of you, I think the entire audience actually got some information that we didn't know. And maybe others are saying, hey, I've called and what's going on? So you actually answered that question. So I appreciate you, uh, Mr. Spell and also you, chief. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Do you have anyone else here for public comment at this time? If not, Mr. Spels, can you fill that card out for me? And just give it to Ms. Becker. We'll close public comment. I'm gonna move into presentations. Mr. Commons, if you can come forward at this time. We've got a presentation from Florida EB Five Investments LLC. Mr. Marty Commons, if you just state your name and address before your presentation.
Can I pull this down?
Sure.
Okay. I've gotten both my shots, so I'm safe. Um, I'm Marty Commons, president of Florida EB Five Investments LLC. Uh, we're the largest EB Five regional center by number of projects in the nation. Uh, given the past ten years hosted seventy-five projects, including office buildings, assisted living facilities, resorts, restaurants, schools for autistic children, and a lumber mill, bringing in over eight hundred investors and over four hundred million dollars to the state of Florida. Uh, the EB Five program is simple. Foreign investor invests in American business, creates ten jobs for Americans. And then the investor spouse and minor minor children get visas to the United States, a very prized thing even today. Uh, we are now focusing on Putnam County and Palaca in particular uh because there are two EB Five investment amounts. One is nine hundred thousand, one is eight, one point eight million. There's no market for one point eight million, but there is for nine hundred thousand. And uh Putnam County is one of the few counties uh where this lower figure can be invested. Uh, our goal is to provide EB Five investor money to help uh revitalize your downtown, uh which will then attract people up from the park and get your tens of thousands of festival attendees to return to shop and dine on a regular basis. But we can't get EB Five investors, uh we've discovered in the last month or so, to invest in the downtown due to several things. The first is the condition of the two hundred block. Um, the second is the other vacancies up the street and also fire damaged buildings. But the two hundred block is the critical block. The solution is to change the image of the downtown by making the entire two hundred block a magnet for visitors to uniquely appealing and popular businesses. If two hundred, if the two hundred block is done right, um, the prosperity will ripple up the rest of the downtown. Revitalization will ripple up the rest of the downtown. To that end, my wife and I have decided that we would like to buy the three vacant buildings in the two hundred block. And we'd renovate them with local people uh as our partners and establish several uniquely synergistic businesses there. Uh, first of all, two restaurants, one would be a steakhouse on one end, the other would be a deli bakery ice cream and candy shop on the other. And then in between those two restaurants would be retail themed dining rooms, a bookshop, a sports equipment shop, arts and crafts, various things that we put in there. And perhaps more, most crucially, an event center uh that would be something where we could have parties, uh events of various types. Uh, we could have concerts, plays, uh second run movie theaters. Those are very inexpensive to do nowadays with the digital um uh equipment that's available. And in order to do this, in order to uh do that two hundred block, uh there's one thing we really, really need from the city. And that is a uh a change to the local ordinances that would eliminate the three hundred foot rule, uh that bans restaurants serving beer wine or liquor. It's my understanding uh from uh closer than three hundred feet to another establishment of that sort, as well as uh within three hundred feet of a church. I know there are waivers available uh that can be done, but uh our investors are this sizable investment uh requires us to really know that that can be done, that that's something the city wants. And there are a couple of things we'd like you to uh consider too. Uh, that Palaca banner that's on the Bingo Building, that's a fabulous way to get attention for this city. I hope that at some point the city will consider a permanent uh sign that says something like dine and shop in uptown Palaca. Uh, I think that would be an extraordinarily powerful thing as we walk over that beautiful bridge and we're drawn to the downtown and you see that banner that's there. Make that permanent and high enough to be seen from the bridge. I think that'd be a massive appeal. Uh, and the other is I'd like to uh as we get uh involved in this investment, we'd like to work with other people in the city and of course, the city commission with finding ways to create all-weather venues for your festivals. One of the things you do extraordinarily well are those festivals. Of course, in the last year, none of them happened, but we've been to them before. And if you could just get the people to come to those festivals and then come back because downtown has things that draws them back like the quilt, that fabulous quilt store you have. Um, and if the two hundred block becomes what we anticipated it could become, I think you have another magnet. Um, and uh there are several ways that outdoor venue could uh be created. It'd be the only outdoor venue for for a rather covered venue for outdoor events in the state of Florida. And as you all probably know, that an outdoor event will either be massively successful if the weather is good or a massive failure if the weather is bad. And if Palaca can be known as a place where festivals are, where no matter what the weather, you can enjoy a festival, one of those magnificent festivals you have, I think that uh your biggest problem would be accommodating all the people that wanna visit. And then you give them a reason to come back and Palaca will be like it once was, uh the most important uh inland port in the entire state of Florida. Uh, that's why this fabulous, beautiful downtown structures that you have are here because it was such an extraordinary uh town. And now that you're working in so many ways on so many things in the last few years that we've seen changes, uh since the last time I was here ten years ago, uh I would encourage you to consider first that ordinance change. Um, it was discussed, I think, a few briefly with the city manager. Um, and we're prepared to put in significant money, amount of money of our personal money into the into the town. And then once that is done and the two hundred block becomes a a model of what can be done uh the rest of the area, uh I think it'll be relatively easy to get EB Five investors to come to uh uh to come to town. We've got three groups, one or four groups. One from Mexico, one from Dubai, uh one from uh uh Brazil. Uh, and I've forgotten the other one uh that are prepared to invest once we show them that we started it all by that two hundred block. It also helps that the one hundred block is now being beautifully rehabbed. I I'm sorry if it went on too long.
Not at all. Uh, we respected more. At least I was.
Well, I'll be happy to say more, but I I don't wanna take up your time. But I'll answer any questions if you have any-
Any questions or comments from the commission?
I'm just I'm just thinking for the interest, you know, again, we're trying to um develop the downtown core and you know, we welcome, we welcome investors. That's why that's what we're here. We're here to re- remove roadblocks and red tape. Whatever you can do to help.
I should probably mention one level of experience that my wife and I have that we were passing on is for fifteen years, we had Chapters Cafe and Bookshop in various locations in uh Orlando and the Orlando area. And uh uh we're prepared to do that again with local partners. We want local partners on everything.
Right. And I I think and I'll I'll just, you gotta comment.
I had a question. Uh, the first part of what he asked was that uh you uh eliminate the restrictions that prohibit the establishment of alcohol-serving establishments within three hundred feet of each other or within three hundred feet of churches. Uh, as you know, what you have is basically a requirement that a conditional use be applied for in order for a alcohol-serving establishment to locate within three hundred feet of another alcohol-serving establishment or of a church. So you do allow it, but you do require that a conditional use application be submitted and that it be approved. So he, uh, the gentleman did come to me and ask about that uh a possibility of making essentially it uh permissible without the need for conditional use to locate uh alcohol-serving establishments within three hundred feet of each other or within three hundred feet of churches. I told him that uh certainly it's possible for us to draft that ordinance, but we would need direction from the city commission. So the city commission wishes us to direct or to draft such an ordinance and present it to you for consideration. We'll be happy to do it.
Any other comments from the commission? I'll I'll make comment. Um, I had an opportunity to meet uh Mr. Cummins beforehand. Um, didn't get the this particular request at that time. Um, but I what I will say is that we've had conversations about creating the entertainment district, walking district within the city of Palaca. Um, and we also talked about um the three hundred foot um restrictions that we have in place as it relates to um out the servant of alcohol. But if you wanna see the best example of what this community is committed to as it relates to being able to um be progressive in the way that we do things, you can look at Stingbowl Willie's and look right across the street and you'll see Marichilli's Restaurant. And those two places are within fifty, within a hundred feet of one another. Um, and Marichilli's is a fairly new restaurant. Um, the conditional use was granted for them and it puts us in a position where um the city uh continually wants to provide businesses and services as well as r- and and restaurants are needed within the downtown area as well as uh entertainment establishment. So I I think when you look at this commission and the progressiveness that's here, um even um looking at how uh First Presbyterian Church committed to and a and consented to um the city putting in a restaurant which serve alcohol within in less than three hundred feet of their church. Um, you see it continuously. Uh, you saw Hall Hogwash Restaurant was on Second Street. The same things happened. Those are three primary examples within the last few years of the city bringing in establishments that serve alcohol within those perimeters um and being progressive and doing so. And so I I think when you look at the city as a whole, uh I think the uh the alarms that have been set off so far with you and your investors are are false. They're false alarms. And I think that you're making it far big of a deal. We can't guarantee- We can't guarantee that it would happen, but I, I think that within those districts, it hasn't been out of the realm for us to approve alcohol establishments under the, under the correct parameters so that they can proceed in those areas. And in fact, we've encouraged folks to come in. The student group has come in as well and, and worked diligently with us and various community partners to try to create programming in certain areas so that we can create entertainment areas which are going to be separate from some of our retail areas and provide walking areas so that people can actually get around and do things without having, having certain, without having the need for automobile traffic to be quite the same as it would be in other areas and so that we, we promote walking district as well. And that area that was identified initially was from the riverfront to Third Street.
How long does it take to get a conditional use approved typically?
Mayor, conditional use only requires a hearing in front of the planning commission. It does not require a confirmation from the city commission unless there's an appeal of the decision of the planning board. So the time required is simply the, the time required to advertise the request and then have it agendaed on a, at, at a next meeting of the planning commission.
Probably less than 60 days. You bring everything in place and if you time it right, you can do it in 30 days.
Yeah, for, for our purposes, my wife and I, a conditional use would be fine based on the record that's here. The problem is, is without an actual commitment of a new ordinance, patterned after Pensacola, for example, is my understanding. It's going to be hard to get people to invest the kind of money to, to know that they can come in here and put the things in they want, I think. For my wife and I, I think it'd be fine. We'd rely on what's happened so far and we'll find out, we'll find out in 30 to 60 days. But for the massive investment that this downtown can accommodate, I think it'd be a real stumbling block. In fact, I'm certain it would be because the comments I've gotten from, from the investor groups.
Well, well, I can tell you, I think the first steps are, let's get with staff and you can work closely with staff and we can see what we can bring forward.
Sure.
At that point. And also, as you know, always those contracts seem to be a, kind of a motivator to get certain things in place. But we're looking to build our downtown up to provide services that are, that are needed for the community. And so if anything, this is a community that looks for a solution as opposed to creating a problem.
Terrific, appreciate it.
And this is your contact information here on this.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
This is your contact information here?
Yes, yes, feel free to call me anytime on this because we'll be going through the next, well, 60 days or so to decide what to do. And thank you for your time.
Okay, and so I'm, you've already got Mr. Holmes and I look forward to talking to you again as well. And so we look forward to seeing you back.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you for selecting Palatka. Next up on the agenda is consent agenda. We've got items A through B on the consent agenda for this meeting. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from consent? If not, entertain a motion. Does this one say item A? So you want item B removed? So we're going to have item 5B removed, removed from the consent agenda. The only item at that point up for vote under consent is adopt resolution number 2021 R27, rejecting all bids for ITB. Your, your mic's off and.
Item 5B 6. No, it's only, it's only six, it'd be only six.
It'll be item 6. Got guidelines for code lean reduction? Alright, so.
So that's on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion on consent. It's a motion to accept consent agenda as written by Commissioner Campbell, the second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any unreadiness?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 6, adopt resolution 2021 R29 adopting guidelines for code lean reductions requests.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'll take that item. So historically, prospective purchasers, purchasers of properties and sometimes even established owners of property who have noted substantial code liens being affixed to their properties have come before the code enforcement board and ultimately the city commission to request a lean reduction. The code, the city commission is the only body that has the authority to affect a code reduction. But historically, the code enforcement board has made recommendations. In order for there to be some consistency as to the recommendations, there had been a series of about six or seven guidelines that have been utilized for quite some time. However, upon my assuming this post and the issue coming up, I could find no record of the, the, the guidelines. I believe they were adopted by both the commission and the, the code board, but we searched the agendas and looking to try to find that earlier package. And we couldn't find the, the record of the adoption. So with the help of the city attorney, we proposed a set of guidelines to be applied by the commission. It probably, these probably will not go in front of a code board because most of our code matters are being heard by special magistrate now. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have him make a recommendation on a reduction because it is your function ultimately. But the factors that are listed in these guidelines would be factors that would be addressed by you in each case where a request for code reduction is made. As I said, you're the only ones that can reduce a code lean or eliminate it. So if you haven't done it, it hasn't been done. But in order for there to be a consistency with the same questions and the same factors being applied to each request, there's a need for some written guidelines so that we don't treat one differently from another. As I think the mayor will attest, because he served on the code board many years ago, there, there were a set of guidelines. But again, that I, I cannot find the actual record of the guidelines and in our attempt to go back and find those guidelines through the adoption process, when they were adopted by the commission, doing an agenda search, we couldn't find them. So we put these guidelines together, they're a combination of input from myself, the city attorney, I think we also got input from, from Mr. Griffith. And therefore you to consider, you can accept them all, take some out, add to them, whatever you'd like, but you know, one of the, the, one of the challenges that any government entity faces is a challenge that they treat some requests different from others. And the challenge can be brought that you're acting in an arbitrary or capricious fashion when you don't have a set of guidelines that you apply consistently. And you're the ones that apply them, so you'd be the ones to make the decisions. But, but by, by having an adopted set of guidelines, we can hopefully avoid that, that accusation. So the factors that are there are basically practical factors. For instance, in some jurisdictions, properties never languish with a code lean. The property values are so high that a property is going to be purchased. It'll be purchased if there's a foreclosure based upon a code lean, it'll be purchased. But in Putnam County, Palatka, that has not been the case. Been many properties that code liens accumulated upon, went to the foreclosure process and nobody bought them. We ended up owning them and we're not in the property ownership business. That's been the attitude of the commission in the past. So if a prospective purchaser has that idea of buying property that's, that's suffering from code defects, dilapidated, in need of repair. But there's a lot of code lean, a large amount of code liens encumbering that property. Many times they'll inquire about the possibility of having those liens reduced so that their purchase price is not impacted by those additional liens. And one of the predicates, the predicates of having a code lean reduced has always been the property has to be brought into compliance first. So the code liens have not been reduced historically, at least not since I've been city attorney, unless the property has first been brought into compliance. That's a precondition of applying for a reduction and that's in these guidelines as well. So if the property is brought into compliance, then the next question, as you see through the, the look, the review of these guidelines, there are a series of practical questions to be asked. One is the person who's requesting the code lean, the person that allowed the conditions to exist that resulted in the lean? If not, then they weren't the ones that were to blame for it, but they were the ones that fixed it. And then how long after they purchased the property was it before they corrected the, 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 the conditions? And then how much did it cost them? And you apply those factors and then you decide, you know, in your judgment as to whether or not, and if so, how much a reduction is, is, is warranted. So that's the purpose of having the, the guidelines, as I said. These are our suggestions, but if you want to alter them, that's entirely up to you.
And some prob, and just some of the properties that recently have been, where the liens have been reduced or zeroed out have been because of due process concerns. And those have been a bit different than what we historically get. I sat on the code, sat, sat on the code board for 10 years along with Ms. Kitchen, who's in the back of the room. I distinctly remember us having five factors that we looked at when it came down to how we create a fairness on reductions. And so this is a bit more expansive than what we had from the beginning. The only thing I'd like to see in addition to this would be one of the things that was kind of, that we always found was that there was a, a thought process that the city would at least recover its costs for inspections. And we recover our costs that were associated with the process. So if there were costs for inspections or a cost for notices or anything else, that those costs would be recovered as well. And so that would be one thing that we want to see. I think the other thing is seeing that there's a possibility of how we can create parameters to say that, you know, loans, reductions will not exceed X percentage, whether it's, will, will not exceed 75% or 50%, unless these factors are being shown. Because in some communities, what we see is the penalty itself becomes the motivator for people not to continually find themselves in a situation where they're non-compliant. And so I think that's probably something that we should look at as well. But that's the only suggestions I have. I think this, this answers a lot of the questions. And then I know Commissioner Jones has concerns that he wanted this pulled for, so if we can go to Commissioner Jones and maybe go to the rest of the commission to see what your thoughts are.
And I just mentioned, item 12 addresses what you indicated as far as the city recovering its costs. One of the factors is how much city staff time effort and cost was expended in processing the complaint case, which led to the imposition of the lean. It was intended that, looking at that, would, you could factor that into how much, by how much you reduce the, the lean itself. So, and also I'll tell you that we're trying very hard now under the current regime to avoid having the fines mount to some of the astronomical numbers that, that, that we see.
Years, Ben.
Yes, so we now have a timetable for bringing the case forward to a foreclosure so that you don't have a property that's on the tax rolls at $8,000 with $70,000 for the code lean.
And the property is worth $1,200.
Exactly. And so what you have there is just basically a made failure. So now we have a process by, by which we have a timetable established so that if, if we've got a fine running, it hasn't been paid, we go ahead and process the foreclosure of that so that we don't have the fine run up to an exorbitant amount. Maybe that'll encourage people to buy it at foreclosure sale. Maybe it'll, it'll, it'll produce movement so we don't end up buying the property back from the city and then ending up with whatever we have now, 23 parcels that, that the city owns. Not all of which came through repurchase, but through that process. So that's, that's the, that's the reason for all of this.
Right, and then the other piece is, we've got the software in place now, which will allow us to document better, correct?
Correct, exactly. We do.
Commissioner Jones?
I almost lost my train of thought. However, good points. I think both of you guys pretty much answered my question. And I wanted to see those things in place, that's why I pulled it. But I would like to see a definitive on these guidelines, definitive. For example, if you say the length of time couldn't be passed so many months or years or whatever on here so that there's no, 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 no leeway where you're going to say, well, you know, on the last one we reviewed like this, it was two years out. This one is eight years out. So now you're comparing apples to oranges for its time. So we put a definitive time on it. A lot of them, they have the question marks, but it doesn't have exactly, it say, what was the impact, if any? On number 15 is what I'm referring to. Of any of the conditions which comprise the violation upon the surrounding properties. I mean, it should be indicated, we should have it there and it said, if it's, if it's detrimental or it's minimal, that should be some, a point system, let's say. So that it could be definitive, yes, we're gonna reduce it, or definitive, no, based upon the criteria. And, and I know we're gonna say, well, we got subjective stuff and that's where we get it, that's where we're going to get into. We did, we did Mr. Jones like this and we went ahead and okayed the, the reduction. I would like to see, and you already said it, Mayor, about a percent, a percentage. If we're gonna, if we're gonna say we're gonna reduce a lean that's been sitting out there, the reduction shouldn't be zeroed out because the city has put resources toward going out, finding out why they have these code violations. And the amount that we should assess them, I agree with you that we shouldn't assess an $8,000 property $20,000 a fine. I, I agree with that. I think the maximum fine should be the maximum amount of the property, if, if so. I'm not trying to take people property either, but I want to be consistent, as you said. But this is subjective, I think, more subjective than definitive.
But you're the one making the decisions. It's you making them, not us.
But it's going to help us make the decision once we, I mean, that's why I think, I mean, you both, you guys are attorney, but leaning on the attorney's past history of doing this, I would like to see, and I think is doable to get more definitive guidelines, not, not questioning that, that we'll sit around and ask each other once we make the decision. You get what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, but let me, let me see if I can explain a little bit. So no two cases are necessarily exactly alike. First of all, we've got some cases in the system that have been there for years. We didn't, we, this regime did not create them. So the fines may be, like I said, 10 times the value of the property. So if you put an arbitrary restriction in here and say that you can't reduce the fine by more than 20%, okay, cool. You got an $80,000 fine on a $10,000 piece of property, you reduce it by 20%, you haven't done anything. You've still got a fine that's way more than the value of the property, meaning you're not going to get people to buy that, you're not going to get people to buy that property nor, nor pay that lean. It's going to end up with us foreclosing and buying the property back from the city. So my point was simply to give you enough flexibility so in each case you could look at the situation and, and I trust all of you to be able to do that. And, and you could say, for instance, what was the impact? So it would be, it would be on the applicant who wants to, the, the reduction to come in and say what the impact was. City would supply the information that we had, like how much staff time was involved, how many inspections were made? Did we go through an actual process of a code hearing where we had advertising costs and so forth? At one time, we had a projection of, of about $300 as to what it would take to get a case through a code hearing. It's been some time ago now, but at that point, we had made staff time, we had looked at the value of our, of our people, the, the hourly rate, the advertising cost, the vehicle used, and we had come up with about a $300 number as to the cost of getting one to a hearing. We'll provide that to you. And of course, I will amend these any way you want them. I'm simply saying that you may find that you want more flexibility instead of less in applying these factors as the cases come in, because I think you're going to find that they vary so widely, you know, in the presentation. But as I said, we're suggesting the guidelines, we'll modify them any way you'd like.
Yeah, well, I've, I've seen cases, I sat in one on the other, the other week where it was suggested to just zero out a lean. And my question is, how do we recoup any of the, the money spent? If we're gonna, we can't make a practice of zeroing out the lean. We can't make a practice of, because here's what, here's what I'm thinking, okay? Let me just put this out. I'm not thinking this is happening, but it could happen. For example, a property owner, that their property go in disarray and they, they incur a large lean on that property. Okay, so they don't intend to cure any of the, the liens. So to go ahead and say, tell my buddy, I could buy, you could buy that property for me. Once you buy that property, and I know you could go down to the city and you'll end up, they'll wash it out for you, but I own that property and they're not going to do it for me. So we get into those things. You tell me, you, you tell me, we could prevent that from happening?
Yes, sir, I think you can. And I also tell you that we have not commissioned, we have not zeroed out any leans since I've been city manager.
Hypothetical, we're talking about hypothetical, it could happen. I'm asking, I'm asking.
Not unless you do it.
Of course, that's what we, that's what we charge with doing it. But what I'm saying is, if we have a percentage, city manager, I think that we're going to get some, we're going to recoup something from the liens that we actually are imposing. Or if not, why impose the lean?
The only liens we've zeroed out since I've been city manager have been those where the case was so. The only liens we've zeroed out since I've been city manager have been those where the case was so flawed that you couldn't take it forward. That's one, that's a fact. And you can tell me which case it is that you're talking about and I'll, I'll get that.
I say it was retro, it, it was asked, I didn't say you did that. I didn't say we did it as a city. I said, it was, it was asked, could it be zeroed out?
And, and secondly, as I said, you're the protection to keep a lien from being zeroed out. It won't get done unless you do it. But as I said, I'll make this, if you want to put whatever restrictions you want on here, we'll put them on there. We, we, staff just needs guided so that when we bring a case to you, somebody applies for a lien reduction, we bring that case to you. We just want to have a set of guidelines that everyone looks at in the reduction process. That's all.
And, and, and at this point, we don't have any guidelines, is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling you that we can't find them.
You don't have any written guidelines that you, that are in place?
So have we been enforcing?
And.
I'm just.
Have you been enforcing what?
The liens.
Since I've become city manager and we re-instituted the code enforcement process, we filed six abatement actions and we've had a, and we've had, and we've just started having hearings in February. And yes, we've imposed liens and yes, it's our intent to enforce them. And yes, as I said, we're putting guidelines in place as to when the actual foreclosure action would be brought after the lien begins to accumulate. Now, in the past, have they been enforced? It depends upon what timeframe you're talking about. At times, your code enforcement department worked efficiently, at times it didn't. So, you know, but in recent history, yes, it's our intent to enforce it. We had our first magistrate hearing in February. So we, the process is just coming into play in terms of us, us taking enforcement action. In February, there were a number of liens placed or a number of, uh, findings of fact, which resulted in the accumulation of daily fines placed on properties. Those fines have to accumulate. We've set a timeframe as to how long they will accumulate before we'll go ahead then and close the process and begin the foreclosure action. Foreclosure costs us about 700 bucks, not counting any attorney time. That's filing fee, title search and, uh, advertisement. So we, you know, we don't pull the trigger on that $700 without us at least getting through the process of accumulating some amount of fine because, um, we only have, we have a limited budget in code enforcement. But yeah, we intend to enforce them and they're having, you know, you're the ones who would have reduced any fines and y'all have it, to the best of my knowledge, other than cases that were flawed.
Flawed. And, and the thing about it is, and so I will say this, those lien reduction requests that come to the commission have been few and far between. There haven't been a lot of them. One of the reasons that I proposed that we have some type of percentage range in there, but also was so that we could start to look at how we recoup. But when you have percentages in there, you also have to have, um, characteristics or at least criteria which allow you to exceed those reduction levels if it's something that you're gonna do. Because again, whenever you're doing these cases, I think you're absolutely right. And I think both of you make good points. But I, I think ultimately what happens is you've got some cases where you've got to use discretion to get certain things done or to get that property back into compliance and sold and in hands of someone else who can do something with it. And if you don't, if you limit, if you limit your discretion, then you're gonna find yourself with a whole docket full of these cases continually going on like we found historically. But you can, you can put teeth in there, I think, based on the 10 years of doing this. And I, I want to say, we, did you sit on the code board, someone else sat on the code board here? But I, I think you can put teeth in, into your code and into how you deal with liens and still be in a position where you provide discretion at the same time. So to be able to say that if a property's been out of compliance or, for example, over, over 60 days, then the minimum, you know, then the maximum reduction in place is this, unless you can show the character, unless you can show these things. Or if the fine exceeds this amount, you can do those things. But then you got to make sure that when you do it, you're, you're, you're logical as to how you do it. Because the reality is a commercial property is going to be far different than a residential property. And so, um, it may complicate things to put in the percentages in certain ways. But I think the other part of it is, um, we've got to make sure that we at least recover what we've put out there extended by way of manpower. Because I think that's the biggest failure we've had when we did this thing. And, uh, I think it was around the early 2000s when you came on board. Um, we had Judge Hestrom in before and when Mr. Holmes came on board, it was, there was no continuity as to what was in place. And we had cases that were all over the place. And we found ourselves, you know, I remember coming to the first code meeting and all the cases were on the north side. There was nothing on the south side. And so, uh, Mr. Holmes put in motions which created continuity in how we did fines, um, what the amounts of the fines were. I think that's the other piece, um, that was addressed is, is how you create the fine and what are the things that create, um, ex, you know, conditional, additional fines. And that was when you had repeat offenders. And so once those fines amassed, and that was the first piece, because we, now you've got folks who are fined different amounts with similar criteria. And that was one of the biggest concerns that we had, was making sure that if there was a $25 a day fine for residential property, there was a $25 a day fine for everybody who's a first time offender. If it's $50 for a commercial piece of property, it's $50, but it's not 100 for, for Johnny and a hun, and, and 200 and $25 for Mary. And that's the piece that we wanted to make sure that we didn't get to. But in this, you want to make sure that there's a standard of fairness. I just believe that we've got to have something that says, hey, if you don't bring that property into compliance within this period of time, this is your minimum reduction. And the only way that you can get past that minimum, that maximum reduction is if you show extenuating circumstances. And here are the factors as to how you can get there. And so I don't have a problem writing my own thoughts up and giving it, and doing it that way because I think it makes it easier for me to take it from, from brain to pad, um, so that we now have it and at least everybody can critique it from there. But, but that's the piece of, that was my thought. Anything else?
Well, I mean, I, I just think it was well said, but it, you know, we do have something in place and I, I appreciate all the diligent hard work that the staff has done to get us to this point because we were really hurting and everybody have, have good points. So I just, thanks for the dialogue.
And back to my, um, if you may. Um, but thank you for that, brother Mayor. Um, and I would like to see that happen. Um, so I wasn't saying anything about the efforts because we already know we, we needed the effort to, to continue to, to be fair. And that, in all fairness, another, another point I wanted to bring out is, it's a difference when a person purchased property that already have an existing lien because they know it was a lien there versus someone who lives in a property or owns a property in the accumulated lien. Um, so we could also talk about the enforcement, the levels of enforcement, minor infraction versus major infraction, like grass growing up. And we talked about that, you and I, along with the mayor about, uh, even helping some people that have minor infractions. So, um, we, we are trying to help people versus taking their property because we're not into land taking business or, or, or housing, uh, repossession or foreclosures. Um, so I just wanted to bring it out that I think it's just another fair process, a process that's definitive. And I'm gonna leave that at that and I appreciate it.
Yeah, we've, we've had in the past, um, years ago, I think the code board's been a little different. But Ms. Kitchen, you may remember when we had, we had folks that would come up and we had people that, you know, we could call to help them if they were, if we had the, the senior citizen who was unable to, we had like, for example, we had someone who by the time they mowed their front yard, their backyard was overgrown. And, you know, we had people come out and help them and that's what you do in small towns in some cases. Um, but I think overall, we just got to have continuity. And there have to be marching orders that are good for everybody. And I think staff, the, the general intent is to make sure that there is a system of fairness employed so that we don't get, um, and so, so that we don't have people accusing the, the city of, of, of creating a system that, that has biases built into it. And I think, but also I think we have to make sure that we continue to have some discretion because you're gonna find that situation in codes that you would never guess would, would be present, but it'll, it'll become present and, you know, it, it's gonna take, um, 10 minds to come together just to try to figure out how to resolve it so that it works. And so that's what we've got. Um, so at this point, what's the direction of the commission?
I move that we fine tune the direction based on, uh, city attorney, you, uh, mayor and the city manager. Instead of getting back together and formulate a, uh, consistent, fair guideline to maybe lien reduction and fine reduction.
To be brought back in two weeks.
That'd be fine.
So will you get with staff and provide your recommendations?
And everybody, and everyone else can provide their input.
Okay.
So that, is a motion, um, to, there's a motion to table this for two weeks, bring it back with modifications.
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Yesterday. Within. Within seven days, I would say. If you, if you got your comments in by next week, uh, by Thursday of next week, that'll give seven days to, to kind of reduce it to writing. I think between, um, three of us, we can get that done.
And we're sending them in to, uh, our city clerk.
Send it to council.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I didn't get a, I didn't get that in my packet for whatever reason, the, the, the write-off. No big deal. I got, still got a week, I have a week.
Any, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions call on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We'll take a five minute recess right now. You good? Five minute recess. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda. Senate Resolution Number 2021 R30, concurring with the city manager's recommendation to appoint Laura R. Shanks as City of Palaca Finance Director effective March 29th, 2021, per Palacunis Code Section 2-141.
Mr. Mayor, it is my recommendation that we employ Ms. Schank as the new finance director. Um, we've interviewed her, I think on three occasions now. Uh, had her, um, speak with, uh, Ms. Becker on several occasions. Um, has actually looked at our system and Ms. Becker has, uh, spoken with her about various aspects of our system and has been able to evaluate her responses and her familiarity with the things that we do in municipal government such as budget preparation, the CAFR, um, various different aspects of finance that are unique to governmental regulation and governmental finance. And, uh, and I'm confident, uh, that with, uh, the benefit of the interviews as well as recommendations and personal conversations I've had with her current employer, that she'll be able to carry on the tradition that's been set by the line of city finance directors we've had to obviously include, uh, Ms. Becker in, uh, in, um, in keeping us, uh, in accord with all applicable rules and regulations. So I am, uh, pleased at this time to make the recommendation that you confirm or to request that you confirm my appointment of her as finance director.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to confirm confirmation of Ms. Schank's as finance director. There's a second by Commissioner McCaskill, is there any discussion?
Question.
Before we move to question, um, I don't think we formally had an opportunity to meet Ms. Schank.
I'm sorry.
If you could come forward at this time and at least tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name is Lauren Schank and I am actually a former resident of Palaca. I grew up in Putnam County. So it is with huge appreciation that I would like to let you know that I'm excited to come back and bring everything I've learned since I moved away and went to college and started my career elsewhere. Um, I'm excited to bring it back and apply everything I've learned to the city of Palaca.
And I, I guess for the audience, can you give us a synopsis of your, to be, your experience and history?
Sure, absolutely. Um, I started with the Department of Health as an admin assistant. I then went to work for Flagler County Board of County Commissioners where I've worked there for five and a half years and I have always worked in finance. So my backbone is finance to the core. Um, I've spoke with Ms. Becker as far as the duties, um, of myself and staff within the city of Palaca and I meet the criteria and the requirements, um, if not exceed them, to be honest. Um, I'm excited to bring all of my knowledge here.
You got, you got a couple of other guests with you?
I do. This is my husband Tyson and my two daughters, Ella and Emery.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, she seems to be a little reticent to speak about herself, but she's senior financial analyst at, uh, in, for Flagler County. And speaking to her county manager, uh, he had nothing but glowing things to say about her abilities and, uh, the, his competence in her doing what we need done over here. Um, she, uh, also had experience in the engineering department at Flagler County where she dealt with engineering finance, including grant administration, grant, grant accounting and things, uh, that, that in Putnam County, excuse me, City of Palaca, we have a need for hands-on abilities and, and supervision of, um, Ms. Becker, uh, quizzed her, uh, in, in a couple of different, uh, sessions and, uh, about her familiarity with our systems. And I can call him Ms. Becker if you'd like, but I think that, uh, we have a very high comfort level in her familiarity with what we do and, and how to do it. And I'll mention something that, uh, without going into great detail, uh, it was very impressive to me and her county manager, uh, pointed this out to me. Uh, there was an occasion in the last, uh, two years in, in the city of Bonnell where their entire finance department left, uh, without notice. Um, and, um, I think she received a call the night before by her county manager who said that he needed her to report to the city of Bonnell and basically handle their finance department as a, an employee of the county, but on assignment, which she did for about two months relatively by herself. I think it was a seven-person department before she got there. Uh, and his description to me was quoting him, he, she pulled their fat out of the fire. So, uh, then she went back to the county, uh, Flagler County until, uh, you know, she applied for this job. So, um, so we're, we're excited at the opportunity of having her come in and grow with us. And, uh, and, and so, uh, that's, that's my recommendation request.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission?
All I know is that's a pretty telling story and, uh, she was a lot more humble. Bring, you know, she was hiding some of the things from us that she can actually do. So, um, and Dawn has, uh, our city manager, he has not, um, brought us anybody that we've been disappointed in thus far. So I, I appreciate that and, uh, you're very welcome and, um, look forward to working with you.
I want to welcome you too, Ms. Schank. I had the opportunity to personally meet you and you're also keeping another secret that she has a personal talent in, but, um, we kind of found out that we share the same traveling experiences, um, traveling up north from Maryland, where her family's from, my father living there on the eastern shore as well. And she shared her personal experiences about the crab cake, so she's gonna kind of.
I will bring them in, I promise.
I need one.
Yeah. So welcome aboard. We were able to talk about the, um, Chesapeake Bay tunnel, um, just remembering the days when it was one-sided and we had the weight going under it because it was leaking. But that was just great to know somebody from that area and welcome aboard. Thank you for coming back and joining our family here.
So you had a Salisbury conversation. Any other comments?
I was born in Salisbury.
She's well-connected.
I feel like I may be the only person who hasn't met you yet. So, um, any other comments from the commission? If not, of course.
I would like to say, thank, uh, we, we, we'll welcome you. Um, we know that you're stepping in some big shoes. I hope your shoes are bigger than hers.
She's taller.
But no, we, we're, we're excited to have you. Um, I know you outside of this as well, but I look forward to working with you and working with the rest of the commission to continue to keep us in a financially stable, uh, condition and moving this city forward in a positive light. Thank you for returning home.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your appointment and your hire.
Thank you.
So I think they're, um, giving kind of a, a preview to the vote. At this time, we're gonna call the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard. Now we're moving to the swearing in ceremony.
Do you want your husband to hold the bimbo or?
I can come up and join you.
I think his hands are full too.
Keep the family together.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
The State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
And the City of Palaca.
And the City of Palaca. Code of Ordinances.
And that I will bear truth, faith.
And that I will bear truth, faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To sing.
To sing.
And that I am duly qualified.
And that I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the requirements of the Constitution.
Under the requirements of the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Finance Director of the City of Palaca.
Of Finance Director of the City of Palaca.
On which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Effective March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Effective March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. So help me God.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention that when she was sent to Benel, she was pregnant, going to school and still had to perform her duties for the county of Flagler along with those at Benel. So just a little extra. I know, probably was.
I'm a humble person. Thank you again.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. That concludes our agenda, other than our administrative reports at this time.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna waive my time, but I would like and appreciate your indulgence from Mr. Griffith to come forward a little bit. Commissioner Jones brought up some good points in our last meeting and he continues to, you know, sometimes we, we get accustomed to dealing with folks that we've been dealing with for a while, who we know know a lot of the past actions and why we do certain things. And Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones has come in and has asked us about things that we have, has caused us to take a look at the fact that we don't always remind and refresh the, the entire commission about how we got certain practices and how we got the certain, I guess, concepts and certain policies. So Commissioner Jones correctly brought up the question of our phasing of our infrastructure and how we arrived at the decision to pursue certain grants and ask about our grants. And we talked about the fact, and we committed that we would let you know when we had grant opportunities in the future, which we are gonna do, but we thought we'd take an opportunity to briefly talk to you a little bit, just a little bit about the pha- the phasing of the infrastructure that we have in the Palaca, how we tried to marry that phasing to grant applications so that we get the best bang for the buck and the most leverage for the dollars that we are able to acquire. And just a very brief little bit about the amount of grants that we've gotten in the last three years. So if you'd indulge us that, then I'll waive my time and I don't think we've got a lot of other reports.
I think you pretty much covered it.
I don't think so.
Sonny, can you bring that PowerPoint presentation up, please? So as Mr. Holmes said, you know, we welcome this opportunity. It's been a while since we've kind of covered on the status of some of the priorities that the commission set for the city. So this is an opportunity to talk about mainly the status of one of the major priorities, which is the water line replacement initiative, as well as how we kind of go about our annual funding strategy. So for us, it really is a combination of how do we leverage funds and how do we leverage the limited resources that we have? So, you know, a funding strategy simply is grants, financing, local resources, and that really results in successful leveraging. Got it there, Sonny? That's not the one. So when looking for opportunities, we always have to consider where we have available funding for leveraging. And I think you all know that with, one of the priorities being water lines, that is the utility fund. Now, later on in this presentation, once we get there, you'll see a map. I think it's the third slide, but I did want to show you just this image on the second slide, Sonny, if you could progress to that, please. A lot of our priorities are infrastructure-based. So it's important, and this image kind of shows you, we have a lot of stuff in the ground. So even when we get a simple little grant for, say, a water line replacement, we have to be thinking about, okay, where's the proper place to place this money where we can leverage some additional funding to go ahead and get the sidewalks covered, get the road reconstruction covered, maybe go ahead and cover the sewer line replacement or lining? Because as a small city, an old city, we got a lot of needs. So this is, it's, it's a hard thing to do. And a lot of times you'll see projects that are Phase Five that get moved up to Phase Two because a funding opportunity presented itself, or Phase Two get shifted to Phase Ten, you know, because something else happened. But, you know, the city has to have that flexibility to realize, you know, some of these opportunities. Sonny, if you could. So this map was done, I can't remember the date, but we did this in GIS, I'd say, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. The first step was figuring out what do we have in the ground? Now realistically, there's a lot more than that in the ground and I can attest to that. Every time we dig a hole, we find about two or three water lines that nobody had any idea were in the ground that are still in service. But this line, or this, this line work right here, simply red is good and, and green, or red is bad, excuse me, and green is good. It's a heat map. And we did this analysis based upon the age of the pipe in the ground, proximity to mainline breaks, and also proximity to regulatory, regulatory compliance issues. As you know, we test on a regular basis for THMs and halicyt- halocetic acids. Sonny, next slide? Okay, this is my attempt to do what Logan does very well, which is kind of do these funny little PowerPoint presentations, but maybe this is, this is for you, you're going out present. Yeah. So I'll use water lines as another example. Everybody knows sixty-six miles past their useful life. That was the, the metric or the starting point a couple of years ago when we really started this initiative. There's no way a city of our size could just in one or two years' time replace all those water lines. It's just not feasible. We wouldn't be able to live, nor would we be able to afford it. You know, the other image on the right is kind of how we approach assembling capital for projects. It takes a lot of different sources and a lot of different buckets to find enough funding to get a project done. The projects over at South Fourteenth Street and South Fifteenth Street are perfect examples. We knew we had infrastructure in the ground there that was, it was poor. It was past its useful, useful life. The sanitary lines were failing, the water lines were failing, the roads are horrible. I mean, if you drive through there, good luck. You're probably gonna have a bent rim or, or some damage to your vehicle. So it started a couple of years ago. First, the SRF funding came in, the state revolving loan funding for the water lines. Then we realized we had a much larger project. So we started identifying some other sources. And, you know, with your support, we were able to secure the additional funding from DEO for emergency management to address the stormwater infrastructure there. They're also funding the replacement of the road bed. And you recently approved a change order, pulling some money from the utility fund to go ahead and replace the sanitary lines at the same time. So in essence, as a city, we're gonna get to walk out of that neighborhood, which we commonly refer to as the villages down at Public Works. And it's gonna be completely brand-new. You know, they'll have a life expectancy, the road anywhere from fifteen to thirty years, water lines anywhere from forty to sixty years, sanitary for thirty to forty years. So we won't have to worry about it in our lifetime. Next slide, please. I know this is hard to read, but I did want to throw it up there. And all of you did get a much more extensive report. I think it goes back to two thousand and eight. Mandy or Ms. Tucker and I, we call this our Grant Report Card, and it's kind of how we assess our funding strategy on an annual basis. We really try and maximize our efforts in what we go after and more specifically what we don't go after because we do have limited resources, be it staff resources and local dollars that we can pledge as match. So you'll see on there, it's color-coded. What's green is what is awarded. What's red was not awarded or was withdrawn for some reason. And we do a simple little calculation out to the, the right on the bottom that shows you the amount of dollars that this city pulls in. For every dollar that we spend locally, we get in federal and state dollars. So that's a, it's a really important metric and I think that we outperform a lot of communities in that regard. Next slide, please, Sonny. Maybe. Okay, there we go. And we don't have to go through all these, and I know it's kind of hard to see these images, but I did want to show the previous slides that we showed you in May of two thousand and twenty that kind of showed the different phasing. So, or Sonny, if you'll just kind of click through these. You know, we moved from North Dunham Street. That's where they left off in two thousand and eight. Mr. Holmes and I were talking about this the other day, and one of the important things was not just going in the middle of the city and replacing the worst of the worst of the lines and not connecting to a good mainline distribution pipe and pulling good water through bad pipes to get to a replaced area. So Dunham Street was that connection point. That's where they left off in two thousand and eight. We worked through the North, North Historic District, as well as the adjacent neighborhood on Fifth and Sixth Street. We came down through the downtown and the Central Business District on Second, First Memorial Parkway and Third Street. We connected into the South Historic District where we leveraged additional TIF dollars to get state revolving loan fund dollars. And now we've moved out to the Southwest. Palaca Heights up around the ravines is complete. They are under construction right now in the South Thirteenth Street, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth, Eighteenth, all the way up to Mosley from St. John's Avenue back to the Palaca Heights project. So by the end of the year, you're gonna see everything from St. John's Avenue bounded by Mosley all the way to the ravines and to the river, completely replaced. All the old lines completely abandoned, either grout filled or pulled out of the ground. So none of those inefficient, double redundant or even triple, you know, distribution lines that they put in, starting in the eighteen nineties, leading up to the nineteen sixties with the galvanized pipe will be in service. They are completely abandoned. Some of the other projects that are on the slate, which depending on the funding that we get from other sources may get moved up or moved back, include St. John's Avenue out by the hospital corridor. That project is waiting for the county to proceed with that project. As you're aware, they got some hazard mitigation dollars to redo the stormwater infrastructure in that area. So we're designed and permitted. We got the funding set aside. We're just waiting for their project and hopefully we'll be able to contribute funding to the county. Let them include that in their construction scope. Is that the end of it, Sonny? Okay. Another example of St. John's Avenue downtown, that's been broken into three different phases. And we are working towards the north. You'll see in this year's budget in the utility, we'll be setting aside some additional engineering and permitting dollars so that we can continue to have projects fully entitled, ready to submit for additional funding opportunities. My goal would be to, you know, leave the city at some point and say that we replaced every single, you know, piece of potable line that was in need of replacement. So we did a portion of that phase, Mayor. As you're aware, we were able to get about five hundred thousand dollars from the Water Management District. We did Fourth, Fifth and Sixth, as well as the East-West Roads leading up to Dunham. That is one of those areas where we'll be looking at getting the engineering and the permitting in place. We've had a couple of good years with the utility. If things continue and we continue to stay on pace, you know, and do those incremental increases on an annual basis, you're gonna be setting aside enough money that when the debt service rolls off in twenty years, we'll be a pay-as-you-go utility and you won't be looking for outside funding. I would hope within the next five years, Mayor, that we would be talking about moving into the, the James H. Long area, the Nineteenth Street area and the asbestos cement line that we have on Old Jack's.
The county's gonna have to replace off of Old Jack's all that drainage that they've gotten there anyway as well. And so it may be a perfect opportunity for a joint project.
Well, they've got a project right now where they're replacing the pipe near Old Jack's and the Beck dealership. I think we're actually gonna fund a, a small amount to replace about a hundred or two hundred foot of water line because it's in conflict with the drainage structure. So sometimes it's little wins. It's, it's not about thirteen miles. It's doing two hundred feet here and there, too.
It's the same, that's the same drainage line. It runs through that entire area back to Bay Street. It's just outside of the city limits.
They're working on that right now. We actually, one of our contractors, D V Civil, that's gonna be doing the drainage project on South Thirteenth, Fourteenth and Fifteenth is the contractor for the county doing that project.
I think another escalator for is gonna be looking at opportunities to create subject to sewer opportunities in some of the enclaves. I think what that will do for us is put us in a position where we've got additional funding from the state that will allow us to come in and really hit some of the areas like, by, by Palaca Ford, between Palaca Ford and Palaca High School for, as kind of a geographical area. Those pockets, as well as some of the other pockets that you have. Baileyville moving out towards the James H. Long area as well, and between there and the car dealerships. Those are all areas that if you can create subject to sewer opportunities and additional housing and road improvement dollars come with it, then it, it creates just additional opportunities for us to be able to tie our system together completely.
So I, I'll close on this note, and Mr. Holmes may want to say more about this, but I think you're all aware, we do have the priorities workshop coming up in the next month. Staff really relies on direction from you on an annual basis as to what you want to see us put in place, be it through grant applications, be it through initiatives or just how we conduct ourselves in the day-to-day business. So we're really excited to hold that workshop with you and, and see what you want us to work on for the coming years.
Yeah, I'd like to see that Fifth to Fourteenth Street corridor moved up on the, you know, on the, on the phases where we were initially. Because I think it's critical for us to kind of create that continuity and symmetry across the city.
Well, it might be an opportunity soon. As you know, at the last meeting when we made notice about receiving the funding for the stormwater, just like I said earlier, sometimes you get a small wind like that and it causes the city to reconsider prioritizing. So we'll possibly be looking at when we break ground, finding the funding to do the potable and the sanitary at the same time.
Or we continue to make rides to Tallahassee, too. So.
Whatever it takes.
So any questions from the commission? Comments?
No, just thanks for the good work that you guys are doing with all the infrastructure projects and the funding that you're acquiring because again, we don't, we don't collect much money as it relates to Avalorum taxes. I think we get probably less than three million dollars a year just on base Avalorum. So we, we get, again, you can see the amount of grant money that we get to keep, to help us to continue the, the, the work that we're doing to try to help with infrastructure projects and improve the quality of life for our citizens. But again, we don't get a lot from Avalorum taxes.
Day is coming. Again, thank you for, I think, thank you for the report. The report is very detailed. I think it gives a lot of information and it truly gives insight as to what, what's happened historically over the past few years as where, as well as where we're going. And I, I, I definitely appreciate the report.
I do have one question. And I do appreciate this breakdown because it had me looking at two things kind of jump out on this page. And it's item number two. For bio solids treatment system improvement. And the requested amount was three point five million dollars. Is that correct? Am I reading it right?
I believe so, yes, sir. And the wastewater treatment plan.
And then the, the match was a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which, which not much of a match. And then I look at number fourteen, where the requested amount was one point five million dollars for the Booker Park Trails fencing and picnic facilities. And the grant amount was one million dollars, but our match is quarter of a million, well, half a million, I'm sorry. That's a bit much. I mean, in relation to the first grant, it's just, is that?
Thirty-five million dollars per breach.
Yeah, and, and sometimes you'll see a significant amount of leverage because a certain state agency or a federal agency will give the city conversely, sometimes you'll see a small amount of leverage because we do have certain designations where they'll waive the matching requirement be it a RACIC, a RACIC or rural area of economic concern, as they call it, or a ready community. The Water Management District, District is a perfect example of that. So is the Community Development Block Grant through the Department of Economic Opportunity. A lot of times the match is the engineering. A lot of times the match is the engineering and the permitting cost because we get more points when they consider a shovel-ready. But some of these projects do require us to contribute better place dollars, utility dollars, and sometimes we contribute more not only to get the grant, but to get more done. There's, there's funding limits.
That just jumps out on the page for me. I'm like, wow.
Anything less than a dollar for dollar is typically good when it comes to a grant.
Yeah, and when you look at that Booker Park project, just to kind of put it in perspective, that project is, for lack of any other term, a hodgepodge of grants put together from various agencies to get us to where we were, and it also was a lot, we used Better Place to get us to a lot of those, those points in totality. And so it was, it was kind of creative in the ways in which we got to a point where we actually even able to put that, that project together. And the wastewater treatment plant was just, it was really kind of a show of perseverance, you know, for years, going back and forth to Tallahassee and going to Water Management and all the various places, and then one day finally getting a call that says, hey, you've been awarded 3.5 million in appropriations, when we in fact had put a, put 1.5 million in place to do a fraction of the upgrade so that it would create greater functionality. It allowed us to be able to free those resources up and do something different because we've been spending $75,000 a year just kind of dealing with maintenance issues at the plant, and we were at a point where patching was not going to be an option for much longer.
Thank you again, Tom.
So we appreciate your indulgence. We, if you don't object, we're going to try to bring you a little information like this at each meeting, and if nothing else, it prompts you to ask questions of us between the next, then in the next meeting. So again, thanks, and I'll waive any more time that I, that I would have had for comments.
You didn't have any more. Next up, since we're going with long reports, is Mr. Cutright. Perfect, you're muted.
I ain't muted no more. Upcoming special events, I'm just giving you a little synopsis of each department. As you heard, I'm Mr. Sam Carr. They have the Broadington Folic coming in on next month. We have six fishing tournaments coming up in the next two months, March the 13th, 21st, 27th, and April 3rd and 24th, and May the 12th. We have a sunrise service for Easter. We have the mug race. We'll be selling down the St. John's River Shit on May the 1st, and we need to make a decision on the Memorial Day Parade. We have an application in to try to do a Memorial Day Parade, though I will be sending that information to you so we can kind of make a decision. The Bronson, the Bronson Ohio House is open now on Saturdays and Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. for small groups to come in and tell to the, to the house. Nisha and the Historical Society is doing a wonderful job on that now. Followed up with Recreation. Recreation, we have a free golf event this Monday and Tuesday. Please bring your kids out. The ages are pretty much from four to 13. Bring your kids out. The hours will be from 12 to about 3:30, 4 o'clock. It's on our webpage if you want to see more information. We do have a couple of flyers over there at City Hall, too, and we also put it in the paper, so you can kind of see those from different avenues. We're also offering a sports camp the same week, Tuesday through Friday, and that's from 9:01, and those, those, that information is on the same sites that you can find the free golfing information.
On the social media site, too?
Yes, on all our social media sites and everything. So, you know, if you have any more questions about it, just give us a call, but we looking forward to having more kids. There's no cutoff on how many kids can come, and it'll be held at Fred Green Park right around the corner here, and we're going to enjoy as much sun as we can. I know we've got a couple of rainy days, but we'll, we'll make it do. Now, code enforcement, to piggyback on what Mr. Holmes was saying, we have four cases that had liens put on them, but the 30-day compliance we're in on March the 18th of this month. So once on March 18th, we'll go out there on March the 19th. If it's not in compliance, we will continue to do the paperwork and start the liens and fines per day. As of the 60-day report I sent y'all last week, we have had 10 more complaints come in. We're working those processes and doing our due diligence to get them prioritized. We have three cases that will be submitted to the Special Magistrate next month, which actually be this month, which is next week on the 18th. We have 20 code cases, either re-inspecting and doing the filing administrative paperwork we closed out because it was just minimum or actually just not clearing the paperwork out on some of these cases. So, so code enforcement is doing their job, but just give you a little history. In ADG, we had 5,342 cases of, with code enforcement complaints. Some are just minor complaints that we can go through and re-inspect and probably close out, but it takes time. We have one active code enforcement person and a great administrator in Aaron Hughes, and their code enforcement officer is David Green, and they're doing due diligence. Hopefully, we're making y'all proud, and we're going to continue to strive for it. Other than that, that is it. Any questions? I'm willing to hear the answer.
Mr. Cutright, you said 5,000 cases. That was 5,000 you inherited, correct?
Yes, in ADG, we inherited in ADG. A total with ADG and our work is 5,522.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your report.
Chief Taylor.
Yes, sir. We've had quite a bit of change here at the department. We've got three new positions and new guys who have passed the promotional test. So we have a new captain with Philip Smith. We have a new lieutenant with Kenny Reed, and we have a new engineer with John Foley. Those guys have worked hard and studied and showed themselves approved, and they've moved up into the new position. As well, we've got our new website coming online here in the next few days, so people can look for fire prevention tips and community outreach and reach out to help people that need stuff. They can find some of those sites on our site. They'll be linked together. The Fire Marshal's staying busy, as the planner and the city manager and everyone knows. There's a lot of work happening around the city, and we're approving what we can and making them come back when they can't get it done right. But we're staying pretty busy there. Also, I'd like to thank the crews today. We had a hazmat spill on the north side with some mercury. The guy showed up, handled the problem professionally. We got it taken care of and moved out of the, out into the county landfill. Other than that, everything's kind of business as usual, running lots of calls, probably on track for about 4,000 calls this year. So other than that, thank you for the time.
All right, thank you. Sheel. Mr. Griffith. Ms. Tucker, is she on? Okay. Pastor Mulberry. You have anything for us tonight? Chief Shaw.
Over the past year, we've had a tremendous amount of turnover, but I'm pleased to say we've been working very hard on getting those positions filled, and thanks to the commission, you guys have been working well with us and the city manager on our minority recruitment and assisting with recruit minorities. I'm pleased to say we've hired four minorities, and I would like to be able to bring not only those individuals to, in front of you to, at the next commission meeting, but also the individuals we've hired in the last six months, so I can introduce them not only to the community, but to the commission.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
I got an opportunity in a very unfortunate way to meet one of your new officers. On March night, I got a call that one of my children had gotten into a really bad accident on Highway 19, and again, I found myself riding to a scene and not knowing what I was to expect. Your guys did a really great job with providing a source, a source of, a sense of comfort to me when I got on the scene and providing it to my daughter. She actually got hit from the side and knocked over three lanes into ungarn traffic. So it was a kind of a scary scene, you know, coming upon it, but your guys did a great job, first responders, and I want to thank you guys for that. And I, like I said, I had an opportunity to meet one of your new officers at that time.
Thank you very much. The other thing I have is we have implemented a quarterly awards program. We actually did it as of last year as a pilot program, and it worked very well. This year coming up, this is the end of the quarter, and we're going to be acknowledging some individuals, and I would like to add to that portion by bringing them in front of the commission to recognize them.
Okay.
And then finally, as you know, it's planning season for the summer. Powell will be doing its summer camp. We are working to, working to meet, to, to begin the planning stages so that, as you know, last year, we were unable to have it because of the pandemic, but we are looking forward to try to plan some way to provide the community with a safe environment to deliver a summer camp.
I know, Chief, we also talked about creating some type of method to disseminate the crime stats once smart cop gets smarter. And so, and creating ways in which we can kind of, I think, do what we talked about before, which is have, get a little bit more community involvement in, as it relates to crime stats, so that people actually have, you know, the information necessary to be out there. I think something that we all have to do is kind of put the information out there to the community a bit more, even the commission, in the way that we do certain things, providing information for projects and all that other stuff, but definitely, I think, crime stats are going to be critical as people start to look at investing in the community as a whole. I think it, it puts their mind at ease once they realize how much of an efficient job you guys are doing.
Funny that you mentioned it, Mayor, today and tomorrow. I spent all day today with my administrative staff, involved in a training with FDLE and the FBI in reference to moving from UCR to Nibers, which we will now be reporting on at Nibers. All of our information will be going to the FBI through FDLE instead of not doing the simple way that we used to do it before, simply just to FDLE within the state of Florida. So we will be sitting in training again all day tomorrow, and that's part of the mix of the, the problems we're having with our current report-writing system, not only us, but the county. Of those changes and being able to support that data, there's a blockage there, and not IT savvy, Commissioner Borum probably can speak on some of those, but there's a block in there that's not allowing certain information to cipher through. Therefore, there's things that's just sitting in there, and we're working diligently to get those things fixed so we can move forward and be able to deliver that information.
Then you create community talks once you disseminate that stuff.
Once we do, I provide the information, not only, I've been providing information on statistical data, not only to the commission and to the city manager, but yes, we then provide that stuff and we'll be posted so it can be seen. Before, UCR was posted semi-annually and annually. Now it will be posted quarterly so that you can see through Nibers, so it will be seen visible more often.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Thanks, Chief. I think that's everybody.
I know you said I can't talk, but I need to talk just one second, and, and I don't mean to steal any thunder, don't know what you had planned, but I did mention and recognize Ms. Becker, who's, this is her last official meeting, and...
She was intentionally left last.
Was she? Well, okay, then I'll, I'll wait until after you finish.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I just want to express my thanks to her for the work she's done since I've walked into the job. I don't know where I would have been without her, her assistance and her explanations and obtaining information that I needed and, and helping me understand the aspects of the system that I just had never worked with as city attorney, and then her assistance in, in interviewing Ms. Shank, and, did I say that wrong? And, and then working with Ms. Shank, who's been coming over, by the way, on her own time to work with Logan and trying to familiarize herself with our system. Logan has assured me that she's going to continue to be available to us, and, and I have no reason to believe that she'll do anything but help us through the transition because she's been a consummate professional all the way through since working at times and overtimes and through, through all of the pandemic. So I just wanted to, to express my personal thanks to her for, for the work that she's done. Now I don't have any further.
You sure? Ms. Krantz.
Just want to wish Logan well and as she progresses in her career, and welcome aboard, Ms. Shank.
Ms. Becker, last report. You can stand for this one. And then pull the mic down.
Now it's on. So I typically am never at a loss for words, but this week I realized that this transition was going to be bittersweet for me, and I'm not a crier, and so I don't understand why this is going on for me. But as I was sitting there and I was just kind of thinking of things that I wanted to say, my brain started getting very jumbled, and anyway, so I do have some notes. I just want to, you know, since I've been here, a lot has happened, and both professionally and personally, and, you know, I've experienced hard loss, and I've experienced the birth of my daughter, and just a roller coaster of things that have happened. And I just want to say that the city of Flaca has become my second home, and I just really appreciate everything that y'all have done for me. Sorry. Since the day I walked in, you have greeted me and you have supported me, and I just truly appreciate that. This is why I wrote these notes, because I knew what was going to happen. I don't know why I feel so tired here, because things get crazy sometimes, but this just feels like my baby, and I just want to thank everybody for the support, the relationships, thank you, the relationships that I've built with staff and getting to know everybody, the, me and the directors, we, you know, I believe that we have just truly been able to build a bond that is irreplaceable. My staff, I can't thank enough, they are great. They're wonderful, they're hardworking. They are just what you want in finance people. They do not bend, and, and I just appreciate them. Mr. Holmes, since you walked in, you have provided the city with some stability and some real experience and direction, and I just appreciate everything that you've done for me as well. I can't say enough. You know, I'm so proud of the things that the city has accomplished since I've been here, and I know there's things I've kind of been working through the budget because I just can't let go, and I am just excited for the future. I know, you know, Mr. Griffith's report at the end made me realize that there are just wonderful things happening here, and I'm so thankful to be a part of it or to have been a part of it. I'm excited for my future, and I'm just glad that, you know, I can say that the city of Flaca has helped get me there. I think that we're becoming a proactive city instead of reactive, and that is a huge thing. We have put in place capital replacement funds and reserves, and there's just so many fiscal and, and procedures and policies that we've put in place that I believe are just going to be super beneficial going forward, even though you might not see the change happen immediately, you know, it takes time, but we are getting there. And, and last but not least, I have had time to sit with Ms. Shank. Am I getting a bell? I'm at the end.
No, I just wanted to do that.
Okay.
I just wanted to do that.
I'm at the end, I promise. You know, and like I said, I feel like I am a control freak. We've talked about acknowledging ourselves and things, and I would go into all of that, but I, I feel as if I'm handing off a baby to somebody, and I have grilled Ms. Shank. I have showed her things that I don't know if I was wanting to scare her off or wanting to see what I could do, but everything that I've thrown at her, SIFO, which is your grants, trim, budget, CAFR, she just knows it, and she questions things and she digs, and, and it's really exciting to see somebody who is, who is just as excited as I am for the city. So again, I just appreciate you, Ms. Powell. I've gotten to know you, too, and I just really appreciate everything that everybody has done for me, so I hope to continue. So, um, I hope to continue our relationship as I move forward and, um, anything I can do to help, I am here.
You finished crying?
I'm sorry.
Are you finished crying?
I'm not going to cry. See? No tears.
You did.
Yeah, I know. When I get to my office, it might be a different story.
Commissioner McCaskill, don't cry with her.
I can't look at you.
She can't help it.
She need the box. We need to keep the box.
You got, you got anything else you want to say? No, go ahead. It's, it's a crying moment. See what you started?
I know, I'm sorry.
Now you're crying again. Commissioner Borum.
I just thank you for everything you've done and helping me out personally as a commissioner coming on board.
Commissioner Borum, do not cry.
Well, I'm going to try not to. But internally I am, but, um, pretty broken when I first heard. When she broke the news, I, I mean, I had to, I had to kind of get myself together. So I called her up, we talked for a little while. But, uh, again, it is for, um, her growth, uh, in her career. And you can't fault anybody for, um, moving from a caterpillar to a butterfly. So, um, she's in her, um,
I'll take it.
She's, she's flying high, you know? But anyway, but, uh, she, she's a consummate professional, uh, very dedicated, committed. She has, um, done wonders for the city. I thought Matt was good, but, um, she has certainly moved this city, um, uh, to another level. And again, uh, I welcome Ms. Shank, but you have some big shoes to fill and, um,
Size six and a half.
But you know, and not, and, and not the prolonged thing, but I, I, I wish you well in your, uh, future endeavors. And, uh, you know, if there's anything that I can do to help, uh, you know, just please reach out. I'm here, you have my number. And again, I worked with her mom at water management district. So I knew, um, what we were getting or whatever. She's just a fabric of a mom. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Haven't known you that long, Logan, uh, but, uh, I did find out I know your stock. Know where you're from and I know your family and, uh, you come from a good family for sure. And I, I just read that email that just sent me out the other day when you realized that I knew your family.
Oh, yes.
But, um, good luck in your endeavors. I know you do well. And, uh, that's pretty much all. I'm, I'm in a few words.
Really? Commissioner Campbell. Don't cry.
I'm not going to cry, but, um,
He's going to cry.
I'm not going to cry, but, um, I, I appreciate you, um, and everything that you have done for this city. I don't want to say we're losing you because you're just going to another part that's going to help this community grow as a whole. And I believe that what you have instilled in me personally with regards to finances and how I call you a gentle giant because you've stepped, you stood up to Mayor Hill. No, you, you, you've had some tough conversations that I believe has literally turned this community or this city for the better. I just know some conversations that you've had with JR and that's like the most gentle giant that we've had. But you, the fireball that you were, you stood firm, um, on even some of the requests that we've had as a commission, to let us know that it was not in our best interest to go that route. And we look back now and say, thank you for that. So again, we are just saying simply, see you later, not goodbye. Because I, I do believe that you have a vested interest as we all do that sit in this room to continue to see this community go forth. Ms. Shank? Good luck.
She has my number.
No.
Oh, no.
A person who I affectionately call the financial bully. But, uh, I think you came here, um, young but savvy and you've left with wisdom. I'm good. You've left with, I think you left with wisdom and more than anything else, um, you leave in a better place. People can't say, I, I don't think that we can all say anything about your transition other than that if we truly care about you, then we are happy to see you as seen. And so, um, we're happy to see you grow. We're happy to see you move to the next level. But I made a call to Matt Reynolds and said, stop shopping in the city of Placa. And so, uh, but Matt saw it in you. Matt saw all this leadership in you when he hired you. And, um, I guess it's only right that he came back to rescue you. And so, uh, we, uh, so we definitely appreciate your time here. Yeah, she got rescued. She got rescued from the standpoint of, um, that she was in a wonderful place. And so he came in here to steal you, to take you to a place where, uh, there's going to be a new transition. And so, um, we're just excited for, we're excited for the things to come. And we're looking for the new and improved addition for the third finance manager that comes through where she takes us to higher levels. And so, um, we're excited because, um, we saw finance in the city of Placa go from a point, um, of almost being bankrupt to a point of being, um, self-sufficient and sustainable. And so, um, we, we appreciate the processes implemented. We appreciate the effort. We appreciate the tough conversations. Uh, more than anything else, we just appreciate, um, being a part of the team and a part of this family. And so, um, and also for you implementing the work from home, um, the work from home policies because we didn't see you for a year. And so again, thank you very much. So definitely, we're going to roast you as you leave. And again, thanks a lot. I'm going to ring my own bell at this time. But no, in all, in all sincerity, we appreciate you and all that you've done. Thanks a lot. Any other comments from the commission before we close? Seeing none?
I do have comments. Don't have anything to do with you. Logan, thank you. Thank you again.
I'm sorry, we got legal over here who's going to, you got anything for us today?
I already knew that.
Commissioner Jones?
We're segueing, that was a nice segue for me, financials. And, um, quick question I have as far as commission business. And, um, I don't want to be done a doubt, I shouldn't use done, downer, the guy that's going to bring a sour point. But this is not a sour point. This is about transparency. And, uh, being the freshman commissioner here, uh, there's just some things that I want to talk about. I want to see, uh, maybe implemented or maybe it's just a start of, uh, actually putting this, the commissioner's business out for the public. Last couple of weeks, I received some phone calls from Plaque Daily News and asking questions about what's going on. Obviously we have some turnover that's going on. This is one here and, uh, we know why Logan is leaving us and, uh, we have a good hire as a replacement. However, we have three other employees that actually left us as well. Due to resignation, due to Sunshine Law, us commissioners, we can't talk about it. We haven't been able to talk about it. I referred the newspaper to our city manager that handles day-to-day operation. But at some point, the commission have a duty to actually, uh, either speak to the media on things that we know of. If we don't know of them, again, it's the city, city manager or the mayor or, uh, positioned to speak on behalf of the city. Now, again, uh, talking about transparency, I requested that we'll ha, we have a summary of what actually took place with those employees and why they abruptly left the city of Placa. And I haven't received that summary as of yet. It was directed to the city manager. I spoke to the city manager on, on, on said matter. However, um, in these, in these, uh, in these instances, I think that we need to be transparent to our citizens as well as the public. At least give them, uh, give them as much as we can without talking about personal issues between those employees that left us. But as it relates to the city, uh, I think Logan has have us in a good financial place. We know where we're going. Uh, I don't know if we are going to do an audit or an audit had been conducted about some financial issues. But definitely, I would like the, the city manager to speak on either as much as he can, why the departures were so abruptly made. And if there was something as discipline or in the finance, are we all right with finances? I ask city manager only due to the fact that's, that's all I could talk to. And he, he expressed some things to me that I think that some of it, just as much as you can, put out here in the public. And you don't have to do it now, but I think at some point we owe that to the public. And that's all I wanted to say. And I think Logan hit on it about being proactive. If that's the way we've been doing things in the past, that's the past. We need to be proactive and start saying, okay, here's what we got going on. Okay. And it's been handled in the house and we're moving forward with it or whatever. But I feel as if I'm ducking the media when I, when I'm asked a question. And, uh, I have to refer, for, or watch everything I say, uh, because I feel some of it should be told to the media. Again, I can't talk to my fellow board commissioners. And with that, I feel kind of lost. I feel kind of lost on the transition, what's really going on. Not that, again, I didn't have commission, I mean, conversation with the city manager because I did. I would be lying if I said I didn't. However, I feel compelled that I think there's more that we should be able to relinquish. And I would say that was my commission to comment.
I do have a question. So you're, in other words, you're asking for whatever information you're going to get for the city manager. You're looking for answers from us. I'm just asking for clarification.
Okay. Clarification would be if I'm asking for the information to be disseminated as if, just like Jonathan just gave us a synopsis of what's going on with the project, we all will get the same information. We would know. So that is transparency. We know, I don't know, you don't know what I don't know. And vice versa, I don't know any information that you don't know.
So basically you're feeling that, uh, there's not equity in, in the distributed, distribution of the information.
Absolutely not. That's not what I'm saying.
You don't know what he's, the conversations we've had, and they may be the same conversations. But at the same time, remember, like you said, Sunshine, we can't have that, those conversations. But I do have to say that staff has been readily available anytime I've had questions.
No, no, you, you're going off. That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. That's why I asked for clarification.
So clarification is if, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, we as the commission need to make sure that is addressed properly. If, if it's, if it's not, uh, I'm leaning right now on the city attorney, uh, the commissions that have been here. Am I wrong? If I'm wrong, you, I'm, I'm asking the commission or the city manager or the city attorney to tell me. What I requested is those events that took place, if there was any investigation or anything going on, any accusation of wrongdoing, a summary submitted in writing. So that that summary will be disseminated through the, the five commissioners that are up here right now.
Commissioner Campbell?
Um, just real briefly, I don't want to, because it's not a back and forth because it was his comment that he made and I stand, I, I mean, I support it. However, I do believe that in being contacted by the media, we have to reassure the media that we do not deal with the day-to-day operations. Thus you transferring them to the city manager to me would have been the appropriate thing. Um, and then I know personally that I had the opportunity to sit down. I received a phone call and an invitation to a meeting with regards to all that transpired with that. And I know that the newspaper is doing their job, but again, we as commissioners don't deal with the day-to-day operations. And I just think that the, the request that you made is not far-fetched. And I think it's something that can be done. But, um, if there is ever a question with regards to, um, what we are receiving, I think we all receive the same information. We just handle how we deal with it going forth a little bit different. Um, and that's just how it has been. Um, and these opportunities for us to commit, um, to talk comes within these meetings. So what you've done is the correct thing. But again, the way we receive things, I'm quite sure is just about the same way. But again, the way that we move forth with how we address them personally is different and it will be different from, for each one of us.
Just to, just to, before I move on, I'm going to shut up. I'm just from a different environment where when you talk about transparency, true transparency would be to disseminate the information that what one gets, everybody gets. So I don't know, you know, about the backgrounds of others. And one-on-one meetings are just that. That is saying, I'm going in, I'm closing the door and I get what I get. And I would never go back and talk to or try to communicate to another commissioner saying a conversation because it, it was just that, a one-on-one. So again, the only, how we could get that out is like this moment right here. Now I can say some other things in this, this meeting, but I know it'll be inappropriate. So that's not what I'm trying to do. But what I am trying to do is get, again, some summarized, uh, direction of what's going on, where we headed. Now, when it's asked of us to give direction to the city manager on an issue, that's going to, that shouldn't be a one-on-one situation. That should be a, uh, I don't think it should be a polling act. It should be, hey, commission, this is what I have. And it could be in writing. I don't see why it's not in writing so that we could respond as such, so that our responses will be recorded. And it's not a catch-all, but it is. I, I, I worked in an area, I think Chief Shaw could commence this and or, or confirm this. If it's not written, it didn't happen. Okay. So if, if I say, uh, it's raining outside, oh, excuse me, I'm going off on a tangent. That's just what I'm talking about. I just said if it's not written, it didn't happen. So.
Are you through? Can I speak? All right. Commissioner, first of all, I provided complete transparency to each and every one of you. I didn't ask for direction about a personnel decision because it isn't for you to make personnel decisions except for me. You want to fire me? You have that option. But as far as the staff below me, I'm the one that's supposed to be dealing with them. But as a courtesy and to keep you informed, I sat down with everyone who asked for, who, who agreed to come in. And I provided great detail as to the reasons for the actions I was about to take. As far as your written summary, you asked me one time. You haven't asked about it again. For your information, I provided 37 pages to our personnel attorney in Jacksonville and asked them to look at that before I released it because I wanted to make certain that I didn't do anything with, that would subject this city to, to any criticism, civil action or other adverse reactions to my statements about the reasons that I took the actions that I took. Haven't gotten that response back. As soon as I get it back, you'll have it. But I did not ignore your response. You didn't ask about it again. You didn't come in and ask for any additional information. And I provided you the information that, that I had at the time so that you would understand what was going on and wouldn't have questions about it. I wasn't asking for direction. I was informing you of the action I was taking. You'll have that written summary you asked for. But part of my obligation is to make sure that in providing you that written summary, I don't subject the city to some sort of action by the individuals affected who resigned. They did, they weren't fired. And to then take action or to state, make statements against them or, or regarding their actions could put us in some position of jeopardy. And I wanted to make sure that didn't happen before I released it. Okay?
Thank you for your response at this time. And just for the record, at my job, if the supervisor asks me for something, I should deliver it or at least get back with them. And so I don't want to get in a, a back and forth with you, Don, on this. But it's, it's, don't take it personally. It's just, that's, that's part of, I'm, I'm thinking about what our duties are as we sit here. And again, what's, what's the obligation and what our obligation is to the public? So there's nothing more or nothing less than what I'm. So there's nothing more or nothing less than what I'm saying. And that's why I wanted to say it on the record. So it won't be misconstrued that I said something else. And, and, and from this point forward, I'm just letting you guys know, that's the direction that I will be headed.
I'll close with this. Um, I don't think that it's our obligation to be the reporter to the Palaca Daily News. Oftentimes, the Palaca Daily News searches for information um, in ways that I don't even think are, are necessary. I laid in a hospital and I had people calling me, asking me to give them an article on how I was doing. I, I don't think it's our obligation to report to them. And, but I, I, and I think that in everything that we do, maybe it's just the attorney in me. I think we've gotta be conscious of what the impacts are gonna be. And we find ours, what we find ourselves, I think, putting out public information, you're gonna find yourself in, as it relates to employees on a regular basis in a report saying Billy got suspended for three days. Or employee A was suspended for three days because of A, B, and C. We're gonna find ourselves with some folks who may be reluctant to come here regardless of what the situations may be. I, I think ultimately, um, as it relates to serious can, you know, serious situations that come up within the city that are, you know, abnormal to normal day-to-day operations. I, I truly think that the city manager um, has an obligation to keep the commission informed of anything that may put us and make us subject to liability. And these, and these situations relates to the resignations, um, I think we've been truly informed about everything that's going on. And I think um, he's had one-on-one meetings with everyone because of this, because of the nature of what was taking place. But I don't think that we have an obligation to put it out at a commission meeting about what takes place. From an employee standpoint, the charter clearly states what it states, which is the city manager is overall human relations, overall human resource obligations. We've got an HR director um, who reports to the city manager and takes on some of those duties. But the ultimate person for human resources is the city manager. I, I don't think that at the end of the day, um, the proper thing to do is to volunteer anything to the Palaca Daily News. As it relates to transition, I don't see the Palaca Daily News reporting to us the fact that we've had four, five reporters and editors and publishers over the last few years. So I don't see us having an obligation to report to them. When they give us a report on their transition, then we'll give them a report on our transition. And until that day comes, it, that we won't, it won't happen for me. If you feel like that's what you wanna do, and every commissioner has an obligation to speak as they need to speak. But you also have an obligation to realize that you gotta fiduciary, you gotta fiduciary duty to this city. And if you have a fiduciary duty to the city, that's something that needs to be thought of. Um, I think with a lot of, you, you know, there has to be a lot of thought put into that because that's far different than being a police officer, is far different than being in private sector. And so, it's not that you're wrong in your thought and your train of thought. I wholeheartedly believe that people, that we all as five commissioners need to be on the same page. But I, I don't think we have an obligation to report anything to the Palaca Daily News as it relates to transition because transition is normal. They have it at McDonald's, they have it at Georgia Pacific, they have it at the county, they have it everywhere. But for some reason, it gets more sensationalized when it happens with the city. And uh, when they give us their report on what their transition is being, then we should give them a report on what our transition is being. You know, now we begin to be subjected to public records, um, requests for certain things that are out there. But we can't make a public rec, record request to the public, to the police department, to the newspaper or anyone else. And so, government's far different than, than private sector. And there are some nuances in government that are far different. I think the longer you stay in this business, the more you start to realize that while your life may not be public, the lives of the people that work for us aren't. And so, that's the difference in, in what's in place. And I'll leave it at that. I don't wanna go back and forth because at the end of the day, it's not gonna be productive here. One thing that we do have, Commissioner, just as a point of information, is whenever the city becomes subject to litigation or anything that may be of that nature, which we're not subject to at this time, you go and, you can go into executive, executive session. And that's when we all get an opportunity to talk behind closed doors. But those are very limited situations that take place and the, and the Florida statutes dictates how that takes place. And so, um, typically, if you don't see us in executive session, that's a good thing. And so, uh, that's when we start to have the communications. I understand the need for dissemination of information as it relates and how we're hamstrung um, by sunshine. And I think as time goes on, everyone get a feel for personalities. I don't think that there have been any personal attacks here today. I think that, oh, there's just been an effort to kinda make sure that certain conversations are privy to the public. And I think as we go on, everybody learns each other's personality, everybody learns each other's concerns and their passions. And transition is good. So that's my spill on that, on that piece. You got anything else for us? No, we're gonna talk. You got anything else?
I, I do, I wanna say this. And for the record, I have not spoken with uh, the Palaca Daily News boys reporters at all other than to refer them to the city manager.
That was clear.
Yeah, I just wanna make it clear.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner?
I'll say this, and I think the overall thing is it, it takes time to get used to the process because they, I know I personally was asked the way that I would want to receive communication. And thus far, I received it that way. But again, I think we have to keep in the forefront of our mind. Most of all, again, we do not deal with day-to-day operations. Um, and dealing with the day-to-day operations, we solely, you know, make sure, just don't deal with it. And it took me time to realize that as well. But those are things that come with, like the EMO classes and all of those things.
Anything else, Commissioner? Anything else?
Well, I mean, again, I think it's been well-stated and uh, you know, we, we operate by the charter. So I know for a fact I operate by the charter and uh, you know, we just don't delve, delve down into the um, employee ranks. Everything I submit or do anything, it goes through the city manager who is well aware of um, my, my request. And again, he did sit down and he, he sat down with each one of the commissioners and the mayor and informed us. And he has done that since he has taken the helm with every situation, not just this. We had other things that he brought before us as well. So I think when it comes to that, we have to have careful communication as to what we provide to the public or the media or whoever else it may be because it could put us in a, in a very bad predicament. So when that, uh, uh, I got that call from Palaca Daily News, uh, knowing my place, I uh, sent him written communication that uh, the commission does not operate day-to-day operations. And the best person who can help you with that information would be the city manager who um, is the, admin, he administrates our day-to-day operations. So that's where I'm at and that's where I'm gonna continue to stay.
And I would like to say um, that I have a choice. We all have choices, commissioners, as to how we respond to the media. And I choose not to and will be. So you'll know how I will operate moving forward. I don't respond to the media unless I want to. And I will not at this time or any other time. And I hope that if anything comes up about this commission, we continue to keep that tact and integrity.
And then, and that's the last thing is, you know, I, I think, I, I think we don't wanna lose sight of other part of the context and all of it. I think it's a good conversation, but the reality of it is we're never gonna all get the same information. That's just not gonna happen on any level. What we're gonna get is, I think we all get the information that's gonna be something that is critical. Those are some critical things. But there's a fire every day down here that if you got every piece of information that goes with a fire, and I spend a lot of time down here, you probably pull all your hair out because some of the things don't need your interjection. And you just, you may happen to be here one day and get something that I'll never hear, you know? I never got the opportunity to meet Ms. Shank, but that didn't mean somebody was hiding her from me. I think in the, I think ultimately what happens is I, I wasn't around at the proper time. And so there may be, there's information that comes around all the time with commissions, I think. It's just some, sometimes it's just a matter of when you're there. And uh, it may be good information, it may not be so good information. But I think ultimately what happens is, you know, we all desire to get the same level of information. I think there's, I think ninety-nine percent of the time, if somebody's face is gonna be on the front of the paper, newspaper is gonna be mine. And so if my paper, if my face is gonna be there, you know, I, I'm, I'm here a bit more so that I'm informed of what's going on. Because sometimes you guys are working and uh, working a different job and my boss lets me off a little bit more. And um, you know, as, you know, I, I think as um, self-employed individuals, Commissioner Jones and I probably have a bit more time than some other folks have. And I know I got a bit more time than all of y'all as it relates to how I coordinate my time. But I think at the end of the day, there's an effort to make sure everybody's fully informed. But you're never gonna get the exact same information in the same way. You're gonna get, you're gonna all be informed when it's something that is critical. But I think on some of the minuscule things or things that seem to be minor, you have to be around. And I think when you're around a lot, you get information that you don't necessarily volunteer for. It's just kinda there when you're present. And so, uh, I, I think that the effort has been made to make sure that a greater dissemination of information has come from this administration than in the past to everyone. And I think we're moving in the proper direction. These conversations are good because it allows us to get thoughts out when we can't get them out any other place. I don't see this as a negative conversation. I just see it as a, as another opportunity for us to all be on the same page and on one accord. And so I think that um, you know, the request for us to put, to have certain information out as it relates to critical, you know, the, the critical juncture is fine. And if it's, and when it's, there are situations where it can't be done or it's in violation of the charter, it's just easily stated that way. But it's a process. We're all in a learning environment. Every day we walk in here and we deal with government and we deal with those ten thousand citizens that live in the city of Palaca. Or we deal with those other sixty-five that think they live in the city of Palaca. Those other sixty-five thousand, um, we find our, not counting the ones out of state on Facebook. But we find ourselves in situations where we, we learn and we grow and we grow. And there are different personalities that are here on the dais. There are different personalities that are there with staff. And I think being in a small community, we have the luxury of being able to talk to staff. And in other places, you don't get that. You know, if you find places where, where, where city managers believe that the commission is on a need-to-know basis. Our, you know, our city manager is open about the stuff that he gives us. But we just have to make sure that, you know, we continually do our duties as policymakers and supervisors of the manager and that, um, we all find ourselves moving the community forward, which is what we've been doing. You know, as I close out every time, this community is on the grasp of something great. Every day we walk in here, there's a different business looking to come here. We've got developers looking to build large numbers of homes. We've got folks looking to build significant numbers of market rate apartments. And so, we have to continually keep that momentum moving forward. And it happens because there's continuity with this commission that there is a core group of team members with staff that are dedicated to this community. And as long as we continually be in that realm, we're gonna be fine. Because I think everyone that sits up here on this board is committed to Palaca. We're committed to Palaca and to Palaca people. And I think that's the core of it all. Everyone who's on the staff of this city is committed to Palaca and to Palaca people. And sometimes family will have tough conversations. And at the end of the day, we all agree to grow and that's where we are. So, you know, I, I've, we've spent a lot of time, well, we spent a lot of time, I think, addressing things that will make us better in the future. And so again, I'm waiting on that report from the newspaper before I give them any report. And I, and I'll leave it with that because uh, Vice Mayor Brown continually says something to us that we'll never forget and that's we're better together. I don't take commissioners' comments uh, in any way as an attack, but he's new. So he's learning and he's an HR person. So his thought processes are different than anything we've had on the commission. He's a law enforcement officer by trade. His thought processes are different and his requ, his level of request for information may be different than something we have. And we just, and the thing is, there's something special brought from everyone who sits on this commission. And all we've got to do is combine all these positive traits together to have the best commission in this state. And that's what we're gonna do. And so, uh, we won't, the beauty of it is, we should never all agree at all times. If there's no, if there's no serious debate in here and everybody's on the same page and there's no need to have a commission, we could just rubber stamp everything and go home. But sometimes you gotta stay here to eight or nine o'clock to get some stuff done, to get accomplished. And at the end of the day, it's better than us walking out of here and not understanding one another. And so I'm, I'm glad to have this conversation. I appreciate the spirit of the conversation. And we're gonna continually move our community forward. There's nothing else from the commission. At this time, is there anything else? At this time, there's-